To the Eugene Water Electric Board's October 6th meeting. My name is Steve Mattel. I am the president of the board this year. That duty will pass to somebody else in just a few months. We have all five commissioners, including myself here, plus our general manager and several staff. It looks like at least 29 people are in attendance, although some of them are likely members of the public. We will begin with an agenda check. I assume all of the commissioners have received the agenda and the materials ahead of time. Does anybody have any concerns that they'd like to express or make any changes? All right, well, hearing none, I will move on to items from board members and general manager. We will begin today with my good friend, John Brown, and then move down the line in which we normally sit from there. John, would you like to begin?
Yeah, thank you, and welcome, everybody. Just a real brief thing, I had the fortune to go up the McKenzie the other day and look at things. And I know we're going to get a lot of discussion about that this evening, but you know how near and dear our drinking water is to my heart. And so we got a lot of work ahead of us, a lot of heavy lifting, and I just want to thank everybody for what I anticipate is to be a real cooperative effort. Thank you.
Great, Sonya, would you like to go next? I guess I'm next, actually, I think I sit next to John in the old days. Well, anyways, welcome, everybody. It was not a terribly busy month for me personally, but it was an extremely busy and eventful month for, you know, the city of Eugene, folks living up the McKenzie Valley, and of course, E-Web staff, you know, in a tragic month, of course. I won't say a lot about it, everybody's well aware of the details, but I will just express on behalf of E-Web members, our heartfelt concern for the folks living in Blue River in particular, but all folks up and down the McKenzie Valley who are affected directly or indirectly by the fires. And also wanted to express my thanks to Frank and the line, the senior staff, but especially the line staff, who spent a significant number of hours restoring power and putting themselves in hard way to get things back to normal. I recognize things are not really back to normal, but putting a lot of hard work to make safe the places and restore power and water up in the McKenzie Valley. So, thank you, and that's as much as I have right now. I'm sure we'll be discussing this issue quite a bit more this evening. Next, I believe, is Sonya.
Thank you. So, I also want to just express my sincere thanks to everybody on staff and those who helped restore power upriver. I mean, I don't need to hammer it too much, but there's so much going on in our community right now. And I know people are stressed in a lot of different ways, and everything that we can do as a community, keep supporting one another. And, you know, I just continue to be very impressed with E-Web staff and crew helping in the ways that they do to make sure that we have some level of normalcy during really challenging times. So, thank you so much for that. I did want to note that we, commissioners toward the facility, the area where we'll have the two reserve, the reservoirs being put in, in South Eugene, and that was a really enlightening experience. I really appreciated being able to see that site firsthand, and also that I attended an Alcog meeting virtually this month. So, that's it for me, thank you.
Commissioner Helgason.
Well, without repeating everything that's already been said, I too would like to second the, both the concern for all of our upriver customers and constituents who have suffered great losses in the last month, and also appreciations to staff for their work monitoring the situation and doing everything possible to restore service up there. So, we'll be hearing more about that, I'm sure, tonight, and talking about aspects of that. But I too just wanted to express those thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, and finally, Commissioner Schlossberg.
Yes, just to echo what everybody has said about their appreciation and thanks. And also, I've been volunteering with the Red Cross, and it's been very interesting to be part of that kind of disaster assistance. And it makes me think a lot about our goal for resiliency and the participation we did with the workshops last year, I think it was, regarding resiliency for the county. And I just look forward to, once we've kind of moved on into the recovery phase, to look at where those meetings and collaboration pick up again, because I'm sure there's so much that can be learned from this response. I haven't really attended any meetings, I don't think, but next week, we do have one of our meetings with the city of Eugene, so that's coming up.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, our general manager, Frank Lawson. Frank, any general items you may have, please feel free to share them, but this is also the time where we normally get a COVID-19 update, to the extent that you have anything to share, and we will also tack on a Holiday Farm Fire Unified Command update as well.
You're muted, Frank.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Helgason, President Mattel, Commissioners, good evening. I have a number of updates this evening. Most of those center around the Holiday Farm Fire as well as COVID-19. Go ahead with the next slide, please. Yeah, the two subjects, just point of reference, first of all, actually, if you go back to the original slide. One thing I did want to point out is that during this presentation, you won't see a lot of general photos of destruction. That's out of a sensitivity, recognizing that the tragedy is still really fresh at hand and don't want to, I want to be sensitive to the community upriver. The photograph, just as a note, the photo on the left says, "Thank you for visiting the Lieberg Fish Hatchery." And so you can get a little sense of how close the fire was to the fish hatchery itself. Go ahead with the next slide, please. So, the first thing to acknowledge is just the devastating human impact on the McKenzie Valley community. As you can see from the statistics, roughly 173,000 acres, 7,000 people displaced, 430 residences destroyed. There's almost 400 E-Web accounts that were, which really represents probably over 1,000 people within the fire perimeter. And, you know, our hearts and our prayers go out to those impacted, including some E-Web employees very directly, who reside in the McKenzie Valley or were raised in the McKenzie Valley. And so, we want to appreciate the fact, and unfortunately, there was one fatality, Mr. Perry, who perished in the fire. And so, that's really the first thing that comes to mind from the aspect and the impact of the fire. I'd also like to note here that E-Web is fully cooperating and participating in the formal investigation into the potential cause of the fire. And as noted there, this is the first time E-Web has been in a unified command mode. And what I mean by that is that we had multiple incident command structures operating simultaneously, including electric, water, communications, and generation, and I'll get into those individually a little bit more. For much of this incident, we were operating under the direction and the priorities as set forth by Fire Command, and had little or no access for quite some time to certain areas that were in the evacuation zones. Under normal storm conditions, we're the ones typically setting the priorities. In this case, we were working under the direction and guidance of Fire Command. Go ahead with the next slide, please. So, as part of our response, we instituted both a bill and a loan forgiveness program for the customers within the fire zone. And we've also participated in the weekly MARC recovery events, because people are looking for assistance, and that's a place that people congregate and have come together for different types of aid. We've had some infrastructure impacts, and just to, you know, it mentions there, the number of poles and transformers, you know, over 250 poles will be replaced. And just for some context, we generally replace about 150 poles in a normal year. And so, just this one particular event, we will replace almost double the poles that we would in an entire year. As a result of the fire, E-Web personnel had to evacuate both Lieberg and Walterville generation projects. In compliance with our FERC-approved processes, E-Web opened the roll gates at the dam to prevent debris and clogging from piling up behind the dam, essentially returning the flow to the natural river, or the river to natural flow. Later, for firefighting reasons, we restored the lake to keep, for firefighting, so that they could use it in the fire recovery. We'll probably keep it as a lake until roughly the end of October, and then we'll reevaluate the conditions. Luckily, other than a bathroom on the far east end of Lieberg Park, there were no other generation facilities that were damaged by the fire. Go ahead with the next slide, please. So, as part of our response also, I mentioned multiple ICSs. Our water department has been in and out of ICS primarily to make adjustments to changing raw water conditions. While the finished water's been continuously safe throughout, we did have to address some initial taste and odor issues by making adjustments to our treatment process, and then allowing those changes to work through the storage and distribution systems. We eventually got it dialed in. You'll note the reference to additional testing data that we've also been posting regularly on our website, which shows both source and finished water are well within the guidelines, and now essentially returning to normal for this time of year, although we are anticipating a lot of changes with rain and runoff conditions and changes within the watershed. Not only do the reports show what's been detected, they also have a long list of the substances that have no detection as well, that we've tested for. Go ahead with the next slide. The photo on this side is what shows Mount, what used to be the Mount Hagan site. The Mount Hagan site is part of the L-Rig system, which is the Lain Regional Interoperability Group, which is a system that's shared by state police, county sheriff, E-Web, and others. E-Web is participating with our other partners to get the site repaired as soon as possible, and Lain Electric is working to restore power up to the site as well. Go ahead with the next slide. So, Commissioners, as far as what's left, our crews have made great progress in really tough conditions. They're actually still working up there to restore power, to some kind of slogging through the last really hard areas. We are recommending, at the advice of some of the McKenzie Valley customers we've talked to, that we postpone our virtual upriver board meeting until at least November, we can reevaluate it. Some of this is pending the availability of even basic communications for those communities. Although rates are not part of tonight's meeting, we will recommend at next month's meeting that we do have a, we do not, sorry, have a different electricity rate for the McKenzie Valley. There is some benefit to establishing a unique customer class, even if the rate matches the urban rate, but we'll save those recommendations and discussions for November. Finally, we do anticipate a significant effort to repair and restore the watershed. With those discussions, we'll get into that much more later tonight. Next slide, please. So, with that, I'd like to get into a little bit of a COVID update. We've been operating under, you know, dealing with the fire situation across the entire utility, electric, water, communications, generation, all while still maintaining appropriate COVID protocols. Go ahead with the next slide. So, as you can see, E-Web went from having our first COVID positive case about a week and a half ago to now eight positive cases, and actually, that 18 currently in quarantine has dropped to 14 because of the recommendations to return and approval to return to work. On the right side of the screen are the latest updates from Lain County, and in many ways, E-Web is a good representation of Lain County, which has seen a spike in recent infectious cases. And so, we're really a representative of the community. We also have robust processes in place to try to mitigate any further spread, and to also protect the capacity of our ability and our workforce's ability to respond to the fact that we have a 24/7, 365 product and service requirement. And so, our protocols are not only designed for the protection of individual employees, but also to maintain our capacity as a workforce to do the important community work that we do. Next slide. Relative to consumption, we are still seeing about a little under a 4% impact on electric consumption so far this year that we can trace back to sort of general COVID economy-related consumption. This means that we take out the effects of weather impacts, for example, and also a couple of key account impacts. And so, that's pretty consistent, that's about what it was in September and where it's been throughout the year. Go ahead with the next slide. From a customer payment perspective, we've seen disconnection orders kind of stabilize after a large increase, followed by a decrease. Over the past few weeks, we've experienced a slowdown in disconnects, partly because of the smoky conditions and restricting any outside work. And then some customers who had special terms that were granted to them have also started to not fulfill and live up to those terms. We continue to have customer care funds available, as they are not fully subscribed to this month, as they were not last month. As of yesterday, for example, E-Web received 64 customer care applications, which means we have over 350 funding spots still available for this month, that's as of yesterday. So, last slide, please. So, kind of in, you know, finally tonight, Commissioners, I appreciate the comments about E-Web employees. I too would like to thank the employees of E-Web. I can't think of a time that I've ever been prouder of the organization, which really means of my colleagues. Under some really tough conditions, we've continued to respond and work together for the community, for those in the field. We've had some, you know, that picture in the middle there is the air quality that we experienced a couple of weeks ago. And so, we, anybody who's worked in the field, to those providing support, to those working with customers and walking them through and hearing about their challenging situations, it's been a challenge. Because of that, I do get the sense that there's a degree of what I would call organizational fatigue. Maybe you could call it issue fatigue, but there's a lot of issues that are stacking up. Some of them economic, some of them social, you have COVID, you have some disasters, you have political issues. And so, the executive team and I are watching that pretty closely to see if there's any things that we need to back off or adjust or prioritize differently going forward. But I'm incredibly proud of the organization and our response to just a whole series of issues. I couldn't be prouder of the organization. But we also recognize that that gets a little fatiguing after a while, and so we're watching that closely. With that, Commissioner, President Mattel, I'd be happy to, or staff can jump in if you have any questions or comments about the last month or so.
Well, that was meant as a report and less of an opportunity for folks to provide feedback, but I suppose the special conditions may warrant that nonetheless. Does anybody have any comments or questions that they like to ask Frank before we move on to public testimony? And I can't see everybody at the, sorry, at the same time, I'm back into that situation, so. In any case, I can see everybody except for John and Sonya. So, if anybody else has a question, raise your hand, if those two have questions, just wait for a moment.
Commissioner Brown does.
Go ahead, John.
Okay, thank you. Frank, great report. Just a quick comment, if we still have 300 and some odd funding slots for energy bill assistance, are we making sure we're getting the word out, because it's hard for me to imagine that there isn't a huge demand for any type of economic assistance. And so, I just want to make sure, not saying that you're not doing it, but just make sure we get that out in front of the people that need it, because that's, it's a tough one to take, that we've got money there and nobody's asking for it.
Yeah, yeah, Commissioner Brown, it's, we have done all kinds of outreach. We continue to use all of our media channels, as well as through other agency networks as well. There are some restrictions to it as far as the number of aid assistance you can get per year, but we'll continue to work on that even more aggressively going forward, so appreciate that advice.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, President Mattel, Commissioners, it was a good opportunity to, thanks for the opportunity to update you.
Yeah, of course, thank you for the presentation. All right, we'll move into public testimony, and can you tell me how many folks we have live online in the queue?
Yes, President Mattel, we have four speakers for public input. Our first speaker has sent me a message indicating that he's spoken to staff and is happy with their response and will not be calling in this evening. So, that brings us to speaker number two, Mr. Arera.
Okay, and then we have, so we have four on the line ready to go, is that correct?
That's correct, the fourth is.
I'm sorry, Anne, would you tell me, so we have Chuck Arera, and who are the other three, so I can call them in order, and they can know as well?
Yes, following Chuck is Joe Moll, after Joe is Tim Kling, and last is Joe Harwood, reading public comments on behalf of Marilyn Cross.
Great, I'm just writing that down, thank you very much. All right, I'm going to open up a public testimony hearing with the side of my iPhone, and I'm obligated to read the following statement, and then we'll have Chuck Arera. So, when your name is called, remember to unmute your phone if you've muted it. Press star six if calling from a landline, or simply use the unmute button from your cell phone. Please then state your name and optionally your address or ward, and speak clearly into your telephone. Each speaker will be offered three minutes to present his or her testimony. Please keep track of time, if needed, the board president will notify you when your time has elapsed. After all testimony is heard, each Commissioner will have an opportunity to speak if he or she chooses, although by policy, we do not engage in back and forth dialogue. Please note that failure of a Commissioner to speak shall not be construed as support of or opposition to any Speaker's testimony. If a question is presented by a Speaker and the board does not provide an answer, an E-Web staff member will follow up with the Speaker so that the question can be addressed at a later time. Okay, so first up, we have Chuck Arera, Chuck, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and I hope you can hear me okay.
Yes, we can.
Good, good, my name's Chuck Arera, and I'm on the Board of Directors at the Upper Willamette Soil and Water Conservation District, and I'm not an E-Web customer, but I do feel like part of the E-Web family in the fact that the district and E-Web have cooperated on so many projects over the last few years. So, I'm really pleased to have the opportunity, particularly right now in these troubled times, to talk to you about an upcoming ballot measure that has the potential impact to be positive for both E-Web customers and other folks up the McKenzie, excuse me, up the McKenzie River and in the McKenzie River watershed. And I think from what I heard in the intro comments, we can certainly use with some positive things. Excuse me, E-Web and the district, we've been core partners and pure water partners for years, and have worked really well together on some big projects. A little background, the district currently relies almost entirely on lottery funds and grant funds from state and federal agencies, in other words, soft money, and that's not really a good way to run a railroad or a conservation district. So, the board has decided to go forth with ballot measure 2312, where we're seeking a stable and sustainable funding to continue and expand our projects with E-Web and other partners, particularly in the McKenzie River Valley. This permanent tax rate would be at seven cents per $1,000 valuation, which would be about $16 a year for the average price property of $231,000. We think that's very reasonable for clean water, healthy soil, and wildlife habitat, which is essentially our bylaw. A couple additional comments, inordinate amount of time of our staff's time and of our partners' time is spent on obtaining and administering grants, and if this tax base is approved, we think we could do a much better job of that, either by direct grants from our district funds to landowners, or to leverage grants and things being applied for by our partners. So, with the three minutes, I want to leave a little time if people do have questions and so forth. My main reason for wanting to talk to you tonight is to ask for your being aware of who we are. We have the disadvantage of being a small agency, and this year, we're not able to get into the voters' pamphlet, which was a huge blow to technicality within the state and the county that no special districts are allowed to do that. So, again, I know endorsements are tough for public agencies, sometimes impossible, but positions, personal positions are certainly appreciated, and I refer you to our PAC page, which is CleanWaterAndHealthySoil.com, there's a lot of information on there. So, with that, I'll close.
Thank you, Chuck, next up is Joe Moll.
Okay, I'm here, can you hear me?
We do, go ahead, Joe.
Chairman Mattel and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to comment this evening. I'm going to comment in this period and also later, when you're looking at your 2021 budget. I'll begin by just noting that the McKenzie River Trust Board of Directors voted to formally endorse the tax-based measure that Chuck just described, so at some point, I'd be happy to talk to you about our involvement in that as well. But tonight, I just have a few thoughts related to item, agenda item seven, the watershed restoration and recovery. You're being asked to consider a pretty significant reallocation and commitment of funds to a number of needs that have arisen in the four weeks since the Holiday Farms fire. In short, I encourage your support for this staff recommendation. It's consistent with previous investments you've made in the basin. On a very practical level, it will provide cash match and leverage for large grants and investments that the community will need to recover from the fire. It is in direct service to the health of the river, and thus, the safety and security of our drinking water. It makes use of the Pure Water Partners' technical and human infrastructure for direct landowner contact. And perhaps most importantly, it will continue to reinforce trust among basin landowners whose property stewardship directly affects the near-term and long-term health of the river. Now nearly a month since the high winds carried it through the valley, we are only beginning to understand the range of impacts from that fire on people, on the land, and on the water. The assessment work proposed for these funds will provide critical information, support for landowners directly affected, but it will also help all of us downstream better understand how land use upstream influences short-term and longer-term risks to the watershed in very real terms, like hazardous materials, erosion and slide impacts, turbidity components, and other measures that will be welcomed by the engineers, the biologists, the economists, and the sociologists alike. So far, like Commissioner Brown, I have only been upriver once, and the changes are indeed shocking. But I recognize that things could very well become more shocking before they become less so. Peers of ours and other fire-scarred watersheds have warned us about post-fire floods. I circle back to the importance of reinforcing trust with honest support. I circle back to the importance of reinforcing trust with honest support and connection to the upriver community. In the months and years ahead, we will be faced with difficult individual and community conversations and decisions about how to reimagine the McKenzie River Valley. The dollars that you invest are a part of that. The relationships you're investing in will be far more impactful. Thank you for your consideration as a staff request. Again, I encourage your full support. Thanks.
All right, I just want to remind both Joe and Chuck Arera, if you are able to stick around after we get through the remaining two speakers, there may be some questions and follow up that you could participate in. Next up, we have Tim Kling, I believe. Tim, if you want to do a quick mic check, I'll let you know that we can hear you, and then Anne will start the clock.
Okay, here's the check.
There you go. And I can hear you just fine. Go ahead, Tim.
All right. Name is Tim Kling, and I'm here representing the McKenzie Masters Foundation. And the McKenzie Masters Foundation's purpose is to protect and enhance the fisheries in the McKenzie watershed and provide public access to the McKenzie River watershed and safe public use of the river, and also to support projects benefiting the general public in the communities in the McKenzie River watershed. And that's kind of more, that second part is what I really want to talk about. In the foundation, there's over 100 guides and fisherman and women in the in the foundation, and they're from all over the Western United States. And there's been a lot of talk in particularly amongst us, there's been a lot of talk, and they want to do something. And even a lot of the guides that we were talking to, that are part of the foundation, have other clients that have visited and fished the the river, and they want to do something. So a lot of them, so they've kind of commissioned me to find a project that we can we can help with. And one of the initial things we kicked around as well, one of the most obvious ones is, well, let's redo the boat ramp or boat ramps. And after almost a quick initial talking around that, there's some real problems with that. One is, for instance, E-Web owns it. I know the Lane County Parks owns one, and McKenzie River Trust owns another. And so we don't know if there's insurance money or disaster money, funds that are going to come that way. So, you know, that seems, we're open to that, but it seemed a little problematic. But some of the other ideas that we came up with was, one of the most immediate ones, we just thought of just the navigation hazard removal. And that is, there's going to be a lot of trees, not only currently in the river, but in the future, a lot more are going to drop. And, you know, clearing out and just being able to navigate the river. And in doing so, we might be able to employ, what we would hope to do is employ these out of work guides and using, you know, which would be local labor to remove the hazards. That might be one. Down the road, maybe more is some projects around gaining access to the river for recreational use. And finally, a third idea that came up, we thought might be feasible, was habitat restoration. So basically, we're turning to you is, we don't want to step on toes. We're looking for a project that will supplement your effort. We know you've got projects, and you're going to be doing some refurbishing up and down the river. And we want to find something, and we're open to you to give us some ideas of something that we can do the help to stand alone, to rally these, like I said, there's hundreds of people out there that we could access that could contribute to help with the project. So we're waiting for an agency like you to tell us what to do, and hopefully quickly, because these people are, they just, they're anxious and ready to, ready to help. That's it. Thank you.
You're welcome. And if you'll stick around, just like the other folks, Tim, there'll be a follow up questions that may help direct you to staff folks who could recommend some projects. All right, next up, great. Next up, and last, I do believe, is Joe Harwood, speaking on behalf of Marilyn Cross. Joe, you just want to do a quick time, or excuse me, sound check, and then you can begin.
Check, check.
All right, sounds good.
This letter is on behalf of Marilyn Cross, who lives in Vida. My written comments today represent the McKenzie Community Development Corporation. The recovery and rebuilding of McKenzie River Valley will be a 10-year challenge and opportunity. The McKenzie CDC is the strong backbone for valley organizations in the collective impact model. McKenzie Valley organizations will be in the forefront of the enormous task of restoring our homes, environment, and community. Today, I write in support of E-Web's watershed restoration and recovery plan. The work is vital, not only for Eugene's water supply, but for the safety of the valley's residents. The risk is high that this will be a winner of slides, tree falls, and floods. Our question would be, is this enough investment to have impact commensurate with the devastation? Dollars invested now have the greatest impact on avoiding additional damage and advancing the regenerative cycle. With respect to the tentative rescheduled date for the annual upriver meeting, some of your customers return to their homes in Vida with E-Web's restoration of power, but they have no communications, not cell, landline, nor internet. Without opportunity for a socially distanced gathering someplace with internet access, they will not be able to join the meeting. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Joe, and thanks, Marilyn, of course. And I don't suppose there's anybody else who has joined the meeting or requested an opportunity to speak?
No, that's all for this session. We do have one speaker for the public hearing later on, though.
Okay, great. Well, in which case, I guess I will close the public testimony. Frank, I'm going to ask you to speak first, if you don't mind, specifically to Tim Kling's request, which I believe is really a request to be put in touch with the proper staff to think through what their resources are and what E-Web sees as potential needs and projects on the ground that they might respond to.
Yeah, President Mattel, I'm sure there are a number of staff members listening, and we've got several projects going up. It would it would fall into our water quality group. We're looking at some organizational changes within that group to put more of an emphasis on the watershed recovery. And so I will follow up specifically with Karen Kelly and Rod Price on what direction to take that specifically with.
Okay, great. Tim, you'll, assuming we have your contact information, and by we, I mean that as long as Anne, our board secretary, has that information, then I think you can rest assured that somebody will be in touch with you within the next day or two to, just to take the discussion a little further. All right, I will open it up to Commissioner feedback and comment. We'll start with Commissioner Schlossberg.
I just want to appreciate everybody for coming to public input tonight. I know it's not easy doing it over this format. And I also appreciate the support for watershed restoration. I am curious to learn more about the ballot measure 2312, so I'm definitely going to check out that website. And I too, like our speakers, feel very strongly that we need to give adequate resources to watershed restoration, because it's vital for so much for our water, for environment, all those things. So thank you for speaking and support of that.
Great. Commissioner Halderson?
Thank you. As far as the ballot measure is concerned, I'd be happy to look into that as well. It sounds like the kind of thing that I know as an individual commissioner that I would support. And it is unfortunate, Chuck, that the activities of your group aren't more in the forefront. But I don't know that there's time or opportunity for us to take a position on this as a board between now and the election, but certainly I will look into the details and at least based on what's been described tonight, it would be something that I could be supportive of. As far as the investments in watershed restoration, those are the subject of further discussion later tonight. And so I'll hold my comments on those things, knowing that that's sort of front and center in people's minds as we go through our agenda tonight. So I'm hoping to be able to respond to the interests expressed there after the staff presentation. Thank you.
Commissioner Carlson?
Well, I really appreciate the offer to help efforts through E-Web specifically. I think that speaks a lot, again, to the staff and the work that we do in the community, and appreciate the outreach. Also, am potentially interested, I did try to do a quick search of the website and was not finding it initially. So if you could email that to the Commissioner link, that would be great, so we can get the right information there to check it out. And thank you for those giving us other input about, you know, the upriver community and what we need up there. And I do look forward to the conversation about how we can be involved and do the restoration work upriver that we need to do. So looking forward to that conversation. Thank you for the input there.
All right, well, I'm up next. And also, thank you, everybody, for your comments. They're pretty focused on McKenzie-related issues, and we'll have a fuller discussion about that later in the agenda. So I'll reserve, you know, my own thoughts for that item when we get there. I will respond more specifically to Chuck Arera's request for board-level support. There was an idea that perhaps we might take a vote as a board tonight to support that ballot measure. But honestly, I feel that without, you know, more time for the board members to study it and fully understand what its, the consequences were, it doesn't seem fair to put us on the spot, and time is short. So instead, my own feeling is that we take advantage of our rights as individual board members to review and learn about the thing and take a position if we want, but not as a full board. So I plan to do that. I happen to have had the opportunity to spend a little time with Chuck directly and learn a little bit more about the initiative. Chuck, if, as Sonia requested, if you share the links and a little bit of information to the, to our board emails, it'll go out to all five of us, plus our general manager, and our board secretary, and folks can look things up. And if you give people a sense of what board support, individual board support might look like from your perspective, then I think that'll give folks the opportunity they need to think about how best to move forward with their individual support or however they land on that. I'll stop there and turn it over to John Brown.
Well, thank you. And thanks for everybody that spoke this evening. Chuck, I support your ballot measure 100%. I've read it. I really like the provision in there that says that the rate can't change, the money you'll generate. I think it would benefit for the entire watershed, both the Willamette, the McKenzie, and all the other tributaries. So I support it wholeheartedly. Joe, thank you for your comments. I know we've got a lot of things to do in the future, but we'll get there. Tim, thank you for your comments. I know the McKenzie Masters well. They're a well-funded, well-organized, well-connected group of people from diverse backgrounds. But, and I really appreciate the method, the way you did this. You came to us, instead of you going out and doing a project, you say, where can we help? And we could best use your resources there, because I know you're a well-connected group. And Marilyn, thank you for your comments, if you're listening to this evening. But like everybody said, we're going to have this a little later. Thank you.
Frank, I don't think I gave you an opportunity to speak to the other, the other folks' comments. You don't have to, of course, but if you'd like to, you're welcome to.
The only thing I would add, Commissioner Mattel, is a subject that comes up occasionally. It would have come up tonight, as to whether the board can actually take a position on a ballot measure. You know, based on the advice of legal counsel, I would say that a, you know, you're, as an elected official, you may take a political position as any time as an individual. As a board, you may discuss and or vote supporting or opposing a measure. However, you cannot use any staff time to support that effort other than ministerial support. So, you know, E-Web could not draft a resolution, we could not publicize that, we could not put it in our newsletter as a fellow public agency. But the board could do that on its own, as long as you don't use any public resources. So that's just a clarification. It's really captured in Oregon statute for reference 260 dot 432, if anybody wanted to look up the specifics of what a board and you as individuals can and cannot do. So that's just a clarification for the future.
All right, thank you. Hearing that, does anybody want to take any action? I realize I sort of spoke on behalf of the board. I'm not, I shouldn't really do that. Does anybody want to take any action on this this evening? Okay, and then, in which case, we will look for more information from Chuck via our emails to explore that opportunity a little bit further. We will move on to board action items. The first is the approval of Consent Calendar A. And normally, I don't bother to explain precisely what's on that, but in the form, given the format we have, I'll just remind us that Consent Calendar A tonight consists of last month's minutes, a contract with Brink Brothers for $165,000 spread across five years, and two intergovernmental agreements, one with the City of Eugene for $250,000 to put towards credit for customer bills. I believe they received that money from the federal government, and one with ElCog for GIS services at the cost of about $450,000 spread across five years. Do I have a move to any discussion, excuse me? We have a motion to approve?
Sonia moves to approve.
Okay, there we go. We have, we have the movement and the second. All those in favor, please raise your hand and vote by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
I'm pretty sure that anybody, anybody want to vote nay? All right, the Consent Calendar A is approved unanimously. And now we'll move on to Consent Calendar B. These are nonroutine contracts. And tonight, we have just two, the S2 Contractor for a little over $2 million for five year, spread across five years. That's for asphalt concrete patching services and Resolution 2023, and that's our annual investment policy review. Any discussion? Or request to remove any of those items for further discussion? All right, hearing none?
I would move a approval.
We have a motion, and I believe we had Sonia's hand as a second. Is that correct? All those, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear you or see your hand, John Brown. I can lip sync, I guess, so I'll call that an aye. Is there any nays? Okay, I believe Consent Calendar B is passed unanimously. All right, we will move on to our next items of business. And that is the Watershed Restoration and Recovery of 2020 Water Expense and Capital Budget Amendments. And I believe we will be hearing from Frank Lawson, Deborah Hart, and Karen Kelly. And Anne, I'm sorry, excuse me, if you would put 25 minutes on the clock, thank you.
Yes, good evening again, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay, President Mattel?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Good evening again, Commissioners. Joining me for this agenda item is Deborah Hart, our Chief Financial Officer, and Karen Kelly, E-Web Water Operations Manager. Go ahead with the first slide, please. Thank you. Our topic introduction will be brief this evening, as Commissioners did receive two background memos covering both the amendment and also some of the immediate estimated watershed recovery steps that we feel like have a sense of urgency. We do feel that because of the Holiday Fire, that the watershed will need investment by many parties in order to recover, and that E-Web's primary interest relates to the ongoing preservation, primarily of water quality. In other words, we can't be responsible for all of the environmental and socially, social recovery efforts, but do anticipate investment in the watershed for water quality purposes, and think we can take a leadership role in this. This will be highly collaborative and coordinated with other organizations, and we're working within a structure that is still in development, with E-Web potentially facilitating some work as a task force under the county's EOC and recovery structure. As highlighted in the background material, there are four the background material, there are four categories of sort of immediate recovery, including the watershed assessment and risk analysis, some early stabilization actions, some short-term revegetation, as well as some initial longer-term recovery assistance, so things that mostly are immediate but start to build toward the future. From initial investment and preliminary standpoint, we're estimating approximately about $1 million this year before reimbursement. I'll add to that, this is actually expense. It's not a net, because we have to do budget amendments based on what goes out, not also what comes in, and potentially looking at up to $10 million over five years, based on just some initial, initial work. So, it is important to remind the board that there is no rate impact because of the amendment this year, and that a budget amendment still requires spending commitments go through some kind of appropriate procurement processes. So, this is for the budgeting piece of that, not necessarily approving the individual contracts. Next slide, please. So, the request tonight is that you consider approval of Resolution 2024, as stated on the slide, with the intent of E-Web using a portion of those funds to jumpstart the watershed recovery efforts, some of those which will be reimbursed by FEMA or others later on. Commissioners, we're here for questions and to answer questions, or if you want to make additional comments during your deliberation. So, with that, pretty simple, there's a lot of background information. We'll turn it back over to the board for consideration. You're muted, President.
Thank you, but thank you for that. Thanks for the presentation. We'll open up a queue in just a moment. Just want to remind my fellow Commissioners that if you go to the bottom of your screen and click on any of the individual icons representing folks on the call, click just a single time, you will see, you should, I do, the five of us, or the six of us, including Frank, and also a clock that Anne started. And so, there's about 20 minutes remaining on that clock now. When I call your name, do your best to keep track of your own three minutes. So, and I can see-
Could I interrupt just for a second and ask Deborah Hart and Karen Kelly to also join via video at this point? I see both of them joining, so it should, it should almost look like the Brady Bunch screen for one short, I guess. But, thank you, Deborah. Thank you, Karen. Go ahead, President.
Okay, well, with that, anyway, hopefully, everybody's able to see the clock and each other. I see everybody, so if you raise your hand, I'll know you want to join the queue, and we can begin. Does anybody want to start? I have John Brown in the queue. Go ahead, John.
Thank you. I, you know, I want to get in the queue three times. I got a ton of questions. So, you know, and Karen, if you want to answer this, I, you know, I see that we only have $30,000 for seedlings and $25,000 for septic, you know, in a $1 million budget, yet 300, you know, I'm talking to the state and the federal foresters, they're telling me that urgency, October 16th is about to cut off for reseeding anything, and, and, you know, they use a 15% ryegrass mix, and they've given me all this statistic for what they do, and it just doesn't seem like we have enough money to get in there, because all that dirt up there is not dirt anymore, it's dust, and it's all gonna walk into the river. And I just think that we gotta throw a lot more than what I see here to it in a very short period of time. And could one of you talk to, about those amounts, especially the 30,000 for the seedlings, doesn't seem like much, and 25,000 for septic? This is our one chance to, to help these people out that had substandard septic systems that were legal non-conforming and things. We can go in and give them grants and say, "Look, rebuild, but we're gonna help you maintain the integrity of the river." This is an opportunity for us to help them and to do it right. So, could you comment on that, the amounts, please?
Commissioner Brown, I think it would be best if I asked Carl Morgenstern to log in and answer that for you. He has much more information on the details of this budget request, so I'll let Carl respond.
Can you hear me, Commissioners?
Yep, we do.
So, yeah, there's a couple of questions in there. Thank you, Commissioner Brown, for raising those. First off, the reason there's only 30,000 for seedlings is that we actually have a large grant that's paying for hundreds of thousands of seedlings, and so ours is just supplementing that. We have about 300,000 seedlings already in stock and purchased and ready to go, and then this money would go in addition to that. So, that's mostly coming from grant funds, which is why we didn't need to put a lot in there.
Thank you.
As far as comments around grass, spreading grass seed and getting that down, we certainly relate to the urgency that you mentioned, and we do have plans for using ryegrass, but, you know, based on the team that we've assembled to kind of start designing the BMPs for erosion control and soil stabilization, you know, that has a fairly focused use on like pastures and those kinds of things. So, our solution for kind of the riparian area and other areas is really to mix native seed with mulch, so the mulch kind of holds it down while the seed, even though it's native, may take a little bit longer to, to, to come up, and it may just come up in the spring. But, rather than spreading a grass seed that could become an invasive or carry weeds, that then we have to use herbicides later to address, it was, it was expert opinion that we go this route, which is what we've embraced. And so, as you mentioned, the hydroseeding will occur in areas that that makes sense, and then using a different hydroseed mixture for other areas that we want to kind of make sure it remains native. Then your other question on the septics, there's a couple of septic programs that we're propping up, and there's obviously, we have the zero-interest loan, and then we're providing funds for just the grant funds, and then increasing the zero-interest loan program for septics. And that's another one that, really, there might be a large investment from others to make that happen, and our investment will be essentially covering those gaps. If we see there is a larger gap, and the other piece of this is, a lot of that septic work won't hit us until next year, 2021, when people start rebuilding. So, we don't anticipate a lot of septic work in 2020. That's being pushed off in our thinking to 2021, really.
Okay, thank you. Great answers. Appreciate it. I'm done.
Sonia, I believe you wanted to get in the queue next. Again, other folks, if you raise your hand, I'll just write your name down in the queue. Go ahead, Sonia.
Excellent. So, you talked about some other groups that were investing in the project and grants. Can you expand upon that? I didn't see that information in the background.
Yeah, there's a number, well, Natural Resource Conservation Service is one big one that is gonna be pumping money in, and our role really, in the immediate and in the longer term, is to try to help landowners match the 25% requirement to get that federal money. So, basically, we would be helping fund the match of those funds that would go towards erosion control, stabilization, revegetation, and a number of other things. And then there's, of course-
So, the grant is much larger, and they would match the money that we put in?
Yes.
Okay, I saw the 25% number in there. Is that, does that mean that we're doing the full 25% match, or is that, is that just a portion of that 25%?
No, that is assuming that we're doing the full 25% match on those that we see are needed in the high priority areas we want to be working in.
Okay, so our million would equate to, to 5 million, basically, because they would then chip in 4 million, so we would get 5 out of the whole project?
Right, but not all million is going for 25% match. And that's another piece of that. It's like the septic system, a lot of that match and money is gonna be in the 2021, whenever federal funds become available. A lot of federal funding that's happening now, we will be using some money for match, but there isn't a lot of opportunity to do that right now, until, because it's like FEMA money, it won't hit the ground until next year, which is when our match will actually be needed.
Okay. And the, I saw the, there was an expansion of the septic program to include agricultural. Can you talk a little bit more about that, about that kind of expansion and what that is intended to do?
Yes, so we're looking at the need to provide agricultural growers that got impacted with the fires, such as hazelnut growers, with the ability to get zero-interest loans as well for implementing water quality projects, and they can also use those as part of their match for NRCS money as well. And so, we saw an opportunity here to essentially launch a co-program with the Septic Assistance Program that provides zero-interest loans that also benefit water quality, only helping growers rather than homeowners of septic systems.
And how does that, how does that particular item improve water quality?
There'll be the ability to use those funds to revegetate, or to pull cattle out of the river or creeks, or to do manure management. There's a host of water quality essentially practices that NRCS and others will fund and recommend, that if those practices are proposed by a grower, then we would offer a zero-interest loan to help them implement those water quality benefit projects.
Okay. And then last, you said that some of the, some of the grass and other revegetation projects, even if it was laid down, it may not sprout until the spring. What's the, what's the likelihood there that it wouldn't really do anything until spring?
Well, the, the grass seed is, you know, as, as Commissioner Brown alluded to, we're at a very short window of trying to get a seed out, and we're gonna start work next week. But, but the idea is if you mix native grass with a mulch or wood chip kind of material, that helps reduce the erosion from raindrops hitting the bare soil until that, that seed can germinate in the, in the early spring.
Okay, and is that targeted in particular areas that, how are you picking the areas to actually lay that down?
That's an excellent question. So, part of this whole effort is we'll be doing burn assessments on these properties, and then mapping best management practice for erosion control and soil stabilization based on the conditions that we're seeing on the ground from our burn assessments. So, we'll design those in, and then we'll have a crew following us implementing those on the ground. And so, some areas may not need much if they have a large amount of leaf litter on the ground and debris, moderate burn, say, you know, those can just be left as is. But if it's severe burn, you know, maybe including wattles and silt fencing and mulch and seeding, depending on the slope and the soil and the conditions, which we'll be assessing as we move through this.
Okay. I did have one question about how long that would take.
Go ahead, Sonia.
How, how long do those assessments take?
Well, we're starting tomorrow, and so we'll have a good idea, but our hope is we'll have about five to seven teams working simultaneously, doing three to four properties a day. And so, hopefully, we can do, you know, 20 to 30 properties a day. And, yeah, but a lot of it, we're calibrating everything tomorrow, and then we'll start work on Friday.
Okay, those are my questions. Thanks.
Dick, I think you're next.
Gotta find my mic here. So, obviously, you know, the entire community upriver and the community of agencies that have activities up there are gonna be faced with a massive and long-term effort. I'm struggling a little bit, not with a sense of commitment and the knowledge that I have that E-Web certainly needs to play a role, and we've got a stake in a lot of ways, particularly with respect to the quality and continued excellence of our drinking water. But I am struggling a little bit, because I'm used to kind of weighing, as a board member, these kinds of commitments in the context of our source protection plan, where we do a vulnerability assessment, we kind of rank order the things that we think present risks or issues. We have the opportunity to decide how much of that is for the good of the order generally, and not directly related to a, an immediate source water concern in proximity to the intake. We have the opportunity to balance that in the context of, you know, a set of budgets, notwithstanding the fact that, at least initially, we're in a decent reserve position. So, notwithstanding a feeling and sense of commitment and need to be involved, it just feels a little bit, for me, like I'm out ahead of my headlights, and I'm not wondering how it's possible that we could have mobilized at this juncture, when the fire's not even out yet, to know even what to do. I certainly would support assessment work, anything that would help us plan and prioritize what needs to happen. I'm particularly interested in the impacts directly on our operations at Hayden Bridge, you know, whether or not there's any additional capital investment, or lab work, or staffing, or things that need to be incorporated into our operating and capital plans for next year, even to the extent that we need to address those things moving forward in our operations. But I just feel like it's a pretty tall order, at least for me, to try to just sort of commit, you know, a down payment on all of this. While I certainly appreciate that the size and scope of our reinvestment is probably not in any different orders of magnitude, but I, I just feel like we're kind of talking about an open-ended initial down payment on what will become a much larger thing. And I also feel like, are we the right ones to be kind of stepping out in the lead role on this, recognizing that there are lots of federal and state agencies that are and will become involved, and there's probably a need for some kind of coordinated response and consortium. So, I'll stop there and just say, I'm, I'm listening actively to the discussion here, but just feeling like I'm a little out ahead of myself with all of this, notwithstanding the sense of urgency and the fact that, you know, there are probably some immediate things that need to happen. So, I'll leave it there unless and until there's another round.
Fair enough. I'm gonna jump in, Mindy, then I'll get you last. And I notice there's only six and a half minutes left, and I'll, like, we'll likely take a vote to extend. We'll get to that in a moment. So, I largely want to echo some of the concerns that Dick aired, and I think he's more articulate. Well, we all know he is more articulate than me, so I won't try and repeat them as effectively, but in the, in the same way, like, absolutely, there's some initial commitment we ought to make, and there's a long-term commitment we ought to make. But what I didn't see, or what I don't see yet, is that, that opportunity to step back and update our, our source water protection plan in light of this significant tragedy, as well as what it might tell us about what the, you know, what the risks are going forward. I mean, we didn't quite anticipate this one as a significant impact to the, to the watershed. We didn't prioritize it as high as it turned out to be. So, I can imagine that we might want to make other kinds of long-term investments in the, in watershed protection in light of this particular risk. So, I too want to, you know, demonstrate to the community that we're committed and that we want to protect watershed, excuse me, water quality in particular, and there may be some very specific things that we want to do in the immediate term before it starts to rain. But I am somewhat hesitant, I'll admit, to commit $1 million and signal that we're preparing perhaps to commit as much as 10 million, without there being, you know, an update to our plan, and that we can put it in context, and get really clear about which efforts we are taking that would be best addressed at the treatment plant itself, which ones are about trust building, which ones are about eliminating toxins from the river that we couldn't eliminate at the treatment facility itself, which ones we ought to play a lead role in, which ones we ought to play a charitable role in, which ones we ought to play a supportive role in. I have a lot of questions, and, but like Dick, I want to be very clear to say that I see that there's a need, and it's important for E-Web to be there. Well, I'll stop there. Go ahead, Mindy, why don't you chime in, and I'm sure Carl wants to respond to some of the concerns he's hearing, so we'll make sure there's an opportunity for that as well.
All right. Well, I want to say that I fully support this plan. I think that, I mean, the health of the watershed, like, that's what makes our water so great, apart from all the reasons to support it for just conservation or environmental reasons. But I feel like that's kind of part of our job now, to heavily invest in making sure that just the help, sorry, I get very, sometimes I lose my words. But anyway, I fully support it. I think that it dovetails nicely with a lot of the things that we're already doing. Like, I like that we're kind of harnessing or expanding existing programs. I know that there's been a push to update septic systems out there, and so I really appreciate that this will just expand those programs. So, there's not like a, we're not losing any So there's not like a, we're not losing any opportunity. And I think that we're in great hands with all the work that Carl's done so far. And I know that he has very good relationships with people up and down the river and I, again, fully support this plan.
All right, I'll just take stock of where we are. We have three minutes remaining on the clock. I think it's fair to give Carl and other staff some time to respond to some of the comments and at the conclusion of that, we'll, I'll take a vote to see if folks want to extend for another round of questions. So go ahead, I assume Carl, but whoever it is on staff side wants to respond.
Assume, Karen, you want me to respond?
Why don't you start, Carl, and then I can address some of the treatment plant questions that have come up.
Okay. Yeah, a lot there and a lot of, you know, a lot of understandable concerns. We're in a new world that we didn't envision being in four weeks ago. In fact, it's the farthest thing from our minds. But I think to Commissioner Halgason and Commissioner Metall's point, basically the, what we are doing right now is prioritizing where we work. This is, this is really just triage. We have, in the immediate future, we see that there's about 80 or so homes that are immediately on the river that have essentially a whole, a whole house being burned down to basically an ash pile. And so when you think of that, ash containing, you know, potentially insulation pipes, sofas, furniture, and that's just so there's a highly concentrated ash pile that, you know, maybe a lot of that volatilized, but, and then you have a lot of household hazardous waste from propane tanks to all sorts of stuff that we've been, we've been looking at and assessing. So our first initial effort is really in that high priority stabilization of ash and other hazardous waste until EPA can come in and actually pick it up and remove it, which is about, you know, four to six weeks out. So we, we do see the feds as playing a big role in this. The, the only problem is that they are not as nimble as we are. And so by taking early action and stabilizing those areas quickly, basically in seven days, be able to stabilize those 80-some homes, we do a big service to essentially preventing that ash and that hazardous waste from washing to the river and impacting our treatment downstream. We also are working closely with our Forest Service and other partners, basically to get the information that's coming out in a couple of days into our GIS so we can start prioritizing where the severe burns are on steep slopes that we need to focus on. And, and that's in coordination with, with federal teams. And so basically the way we're working it out is our teams are in the valley floor where there's, you know, where we have the utility lines and we're working at the county. There's highways, there's homes, and then the federal teams are working on essentially industrial timberlands, the, the uplands and BLM and Forest Service to do additional stabilization control and other measures, culverts. And so it's, it's a, it's a coordinated effort that is evolving and as we've worked together in this last week, we've, we've come together and really started seeing where each of us are working and where there's gaps. And all that work is being prioritized through essentially looking at the, the highest risks that, that, that are in front of us based on the data we have. So I was just saying, then, yeah, so it's, it's essentially a hazardous waste stabilization followed by erosion control and, and soil stabilization followed by revegetation this fall/winter and then kicking into, you know, septic systems and development and helping director help with that, that effort as we can, mostly around septic systems and wastewater. I'll just stop there.
So I'd, I'd like to chime in and just mention about the treatment plants. The question had come up about investment there. The old adage, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure holds fast here. The ability for us to prevent this waste from entering our water is really critical at this stage. And the reason is, is that conventional water treatment plants around the state that were built at the time ours was built were not designed to handle chemical contaminants. They were, they were designed for microbial contaminants. So while we have added treatment since its original design, specifically the powdered activated carbon, that treatment process can remove chemicals, but what it does is effectively restricts the amount of water we can produce, depending on the flows at the time and what that actual load is. So when we don't address the contaminants upstream and they come down to the plant, then we're talking about additional treatment costs, energy, chemicals and waste stream processes. So, you know, that investment in preventing the waste from entering the system to begin with is going to pencil out. There's a lot of research out there that already shows exactly what that return on investment is. And I believe Carl has done a really good job of proving that in his 10-year strategic plan. I know that when I first came here, I did see some of the information that was, was written into that, that a consultant put together. So that, that data is there if you want to, to take a look at that. So when we're talking about the multiple barrier approach to safe drinking water, it really does start at the source, protecting the source. We can treat just about anything, but it's at a cost. And then when we are talking about the organics that we've seen so far, the increase in that, we're also talking about longer-term impacts to water quality out into the distribution system, specifically when we, when we are thinking about disinfection byproducts and that formation is something that we, we have excellent water quality numbers prior to this event. We're seeing that our treatment is effective, but it has come at an increased cost. So if we can get ahead of that, then we can maintain our costs at the plant. Wally McCullough and I have been talking about planning for capital increases for the treatment plant. We're also discussing second source and what that, excuse me, would look like in order to address any potential impacts from wildfire going forward. There are some short-term costs that we can handle with our current budget and then there's some longer-term costs that we have to consider, but we really won't be able to tell until we know what kind of impact we can have on our source protection and what these rain events are going to bring coming downstream. So it's one of those wait and see.
All right. Well, thank you, Karen. We are out of time. I suspect there is interest in a second round, but let me find out, maybe just a show of hands or who would like to ask more questions. All right, well, given that, maybe we'll do, we'll try for an additional 10 minutes, maybe and see how that does. Does that work for everybody? I'm going to assume that that is a yes. I saw Sonia's hand up first. Sonia, why don't you start round two? If others want to, when others want to get in the queue, just raise your hand, I'll write your name down. Go ahead, Sonia.
Great. How much of the 1.9 million would be for immediately stabilizing these 80 homes that are right along the riverfront? And what do those stabilization efforts include? Is that like actually going in and digging that out or is, or is the stabilization through the, this planting project? If you can kind of tease that out for me, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. So actually, it's not 1.9. It, it's misleading because I guess that 900,000 is transferring from capital to O and M or something. It's really a 1 million, but I'll let Frank explain that. But as far as that actual cost of hazardous waste stabilization, we're looking at probably 100, 120,000 and that, that funding is going to be reimbursed or we're, we're setting it up so it is reimbursable by FEMA. And what that entails is not really digging as opposed to scraping ash back away from the banks of the river and to, in some cases, it might be in the footprint of the home, the foundation, but getting it into an area that's flat, that we can essentially cover it with tarps, plastic, label it and, and just have it stable until EPA can remove it. And that's the same for essentially all household hazardous waste that we see there, whether it's, you know, propane tanks or, you know, chemicals, that stuff will be essentially contained, covered, labeled, and then EPA will come and remove it whenever they come through, you know, a month or two.
So, so none of the, none of that initial work on those 80 homes is like planting portion? That's really just to stabilize the, the hillside? Okay. So if that's about 120,000 or so, I guess my next question is, we have staff, we would be hiring contractors? We're not using our, so these are trained contractors that know how to do this work safely? I, I wouldn't want to be exposing our staff to that without appropriate training and all that.
Yes, we're using essentially DEQ and EPA's emergency response contractor to do this under the state contract. And so it's, it's using the same contractors that are basically probably come later under EPA and remove them, or someone similar, anyway.
Okay. I, I would absolutely be supportive of doing the work for the, you know, the 80 homes and potentially the, you know, the work to stabilize the, the hillside, because that seems most timely and something that we could do immediately and then when other partners and the other federal funding come in, then we could reevaluate what, what more, you know, we can do and maybe we can get some other matching grants from some of the other local partners in the region, but I would absolutely be supportive of getting that other work done quickly before the rains come, knowing that it's something that we can't really take back and knowing that the federal government is incredibly slow to act. So I do appreciate that part. Thank you.
Go ahead, John.
Thank you. I was a little bit confused about a couple of my colleagues' comments there because to me, this is a no-brainer. In fact, I, I would like to make motion, I'm just being facetious, to double the amount. It's analogous to when we had the snowstorm and the power went out. We didn't sit there and say, well, are we going to underground or not? We're going to restore it. We don't get a second shot on the topsoil. This stuff's going to go and it's going to ruin the river and it's going to ruin the riparian areas. And they got the immediacy and the need of this is, is absolutely, you know, it's the highest priority I've ever seen in the 14 years I've been sitting here and I'm going to pound and, and work on this. There's no way this isn't going to get approved, in my opinion. I am very adamant about this and I don't ever get that emotional about this, but I am, I, I, we need to save that river. We can't sit here and second guess and get into the bureaucracy of it. So three quick points. I think our leadership or our general manager needs to send a letter to the community, take one out in the Weekly and the Guard, whatever medium you want, and say, "Community, we need your help. We haven't raised your rates in eight years. It's going to come, it's going to happen, we need to save this." Number two, I would hope that if we're going to spend this money, that if there's a chance to spend it locally, I know that we don't have the choice of people being trained, but everybody up there is out of work. We're going to spend a million bucks. If some of it can stay local, I'd just like to see that. And third, I think Springfield Utility Board has some ownership of this because they're going to, they're building a treatment plant on the Mackenzie and I don't think we should be leaving with our chin on this. I think other agencies, especially entities that are taking water from the Mackenzie to drink should participate in this short and long-term effort. Thank you.
Anybody else like to jump in the queue? Go ahead, Dick.
Sorry, I had to find my microphone again there. Just a couple, couple, couple of quick questions and then, and then another comment or two. So this is a million dollars that you're asking for, for activities that would take place between now and the end of the year? Is that, is that kind of what, what we're about with this? And where would that money come from? I, I realize we have it somewhere, but specifically, it comes out of our operating reserve or?
Do you want me to answer that, Carl?
Yeah, Deborah, go ahead.
So this year, actually, the water utility had a really strong revenue year or is having a strong revenue year. So most of that would come out of an excess of revenues over budget. To get to the million, about 200,000 looks to be coming out of operating reserves.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, just, just maybe some final comments. It sounds like we're going to be taking a vote here at some point. So, no doubt that there's a million dollars' worth of investment somewhere in this. I think to some extent, this is a situation where we're living by the ready-fire-aim kind of sequence. Maybe this is a circumstance where we ought to do that and we need to do that. I just want to point out to the board that in a longer-term view, with respect to contemplation of $10 million and 3% and 4% surcharges, that there isn't unanimity, unanimity on this board as to the size and scope of our existing source protection program. We all appreciate it, but when it comes up, there are things in there that some of us struggle to tie in any quantifiable way to our sense of risk, to, to actual drinking water quality. No doubt when you talk about ash piles and other things like this, there's little escaping the reality there. But, you know, I just think there are some of us on the board who, while we appreciate and support and wholeheartedly trust our staff to be spending these funds wisely, sometimes we have a little trouble seeing the connection between the things that, as they get further and further away from the intake, are harder and harder to connect to our sense of, of risk and/or urgency with respect to, you know, the thing that we say this is all in service of, which is source water or, or, you know, water quality for the water system. So I'm not sure, you know, that I've yet resolved in my mind how I might vote on this, but I would say certainly regardless of how much we choose to put behind this in the short term, I think some of those concerns continue to persist and I hate to see us kind of jumping into the lead role here when we know that this is going to be a massive investment, you know, investment of time and resources on the part of multiple agencies. And that's with all due respect to the comments of Commissioner Brown and others, but I just feel like, you know, again, we're a little out ahead of ourselves and I will sit and listen to the rest of you as I contemplate how I might vote, should a motion be made.
Well, I think maybe we can just continue down the list in the, the same order in which we took it last time. I guess that makes it my turn and then, Mindy, if you'd like to say something, of course, there's time and I think I just saw Frank's hand as well. So yeah, I don't, I, I think we can, I hope in any case, we can trust each other enough to know that we all care about the Mackenzie and see the, the need out there and, you know, are trying to figure out what's the best response from E-Web. So there's, in my mind, in the case, there's no question that we're all equally, or maybe not equally, but, but that we're all focused on that and nonetheless, we have sort of different ideas about it. I, you know, I, I have those say, I love that place as much as, as probably all of you and I have gone fishing and taken my kids boating and, you know, and just enjoyed hikes and all the rest, so there's just no question about all of that. But as a commissioner, I guess I feel like my duty to the ratepayers is to be really clear about what our, what we're doing up there with their dollars and our first order of business is to secure water quality. And so I just want to be really clear that the dollars that we're spending, that we can tie them back to water quality and don't find ourselves, you know, simultaneous or actually spilling into other areas that are very important to people and people take passionate stances on these things, like salmon recovery and habitat and like, you know, and just sort of aesthetics, which is certainly, I don't know where, how those get, those are important concerns. Those are just two, there's lots of others. And that's not to say that those aren't important, but it, but we should certainly be taking a lead where water quality is at risk. We should not, I don't think we should be taking the lead on some of these other concerns and values that are passionately expressed and need to be addressed up the Mackenzie. We should know about them, we should understand how we fit in, we should get clear about what our ratepayers want to do about those things, but we shouldn't get out ahead of ourselves because that's going to, those things have a way of coming back to haunt us. If people feel like we have overextended our, you know, our duties up there, you can see a back, you can see the backlash coming. So we need to be really clear about what it is that our responsibility is and where, where that ends and where other folks need to also pick up the shovel and dig in. So those are some of my concerns, are basically the same as Dick's. I'm all for this. I understand the need for some immediate action. I understand that we have the hope of being reimbursed down the road and that that's a risk. We may not be, but it's a risk perhaps we should take just to get, in the case of these 80 homes worth of, you know, toxic ash, et cetera, away. That makes sense to me. So I'm not disputing that, but I want us to be really clear because it'll cause, it'll cause some angst in the community if we find ourselves diluting our purpose up there. Go ahead, Mindy.
All right. So I'm still fully in support. And I think that we've heard time and again, at least in the almost two years I've been on this board, that the most cost-effective thing to do is to protect at the source rather than try to mitigate much later on down the line. So this makes perfect sense to me. And looking at the plan, it seems like it really is all about source protection when it comes down to it. I don't see anything in there for like beautification projects just for the sake of beautification. And additionally, I just feel like we have a community responsibility as well. And so, you know, if we look at all of our, our And so, you know, if we look at all of our values, our strategic plan, I feel like this so squarely falls in line with what it is that we're about and we're trying to do. So fully support.
Frank, did you want to say something?
Yeah, President, Metal, Commissioners. Appreciate all of your context regarding this. First of all, I think that our primary role is and should and will continue to be around water quality. I think that every time that we bring something to the board that's a follow-up to this, oh, there's a particular contract or a plan, it should reference in that, what's the benefit to water quality, both in the immediate and the long term? I think that's a very fair sideboard to put on this particular issue. I also think it's fair to recognize that E-Web is not the only one who is going to carry water, pardon the pun, on this. There's a lot of partners. Some of them are governmental agencies, some of them are not. And they need to carry some of that as well, as well as landowners have some obligation within that as well. So now, does E-Web take a leadership role? I think at this point, related to water quality, we do need to take a leadership role. It's not related to other benefits, but many times there are shared benefits, water quality and other things. I really do think if E-Web doesn't step up and take a lead centered around water quality, that's our focus, that who else will in this case? And so, and this isn't a blank check. This is, we recognize that we have an immediate need. I really like the term triage. There's a triage that we need to go through. And as part of that, then we need to assess what we need to do in the long term so that we can come back to the board with what we've survived the ICU and now here's how we go forward. And so I think we will have to play a leadership role, but it is focused on water quality.
All right. I saw Sonia's hand go up maybe before we give the floor to Sonia. Does anybody, do we want to put time on the clock for a third round? Hands up for those in favor of that? All right. Well, Sonia wants to speak nonetheless. Why don't we give Sonia a couple of minutes and then I think we can maybe move to a vote. Go ahead, Sonia.
Great. Thank you. I just wanted to touch base on the .9 million. So is the, sorry, not .9, well, $900,000, the $900,000 that went in there, is that the increase that's noted in the resolution for increased operating costs, just regular without any of the rains coming down?
So the $900,000 on top of the million is moving monies from the capital budget to the O and M budget because our, because we won't be spending all of that capital budget this year. Some of those costs that we had expected to transfer to capital through labor and overhead are not moving. So it's a shifting from one budget to the other.
So the resolution is just moving those funds over, but then it's also some idea of actually supporting this project as it's outlined in.
So the million, a million of that is in support of this project and $900,000 of that budget amendment is shifting from capital to O and M.
Okay. I guess my thought on that is the reason that we're shifting it to O and M is that there's some increased cost to actually clean the water. Is that the reason?
This is unrelated, but we prefer to just bring one budget amendment this year. So every year when the capital budget is constructed, there's an assumption that a certain amount of labor will go to the capital budget and a certain amount of our overhead costs will shift to being charged to capital because our capital won't be spent in its entirety this year. More labor than we expected and more overhead is still living in the O and M budget.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Commissioner Carlson, I would also add that much of the spending that we're talking about in this conversation does not qualify as capital. And so it has to go into that, into the O and M or the expense account.
I guess I was trying to get a sense of if this work would actually prevent an increase in the O and M later because, you know, you said earlier that the powder-activated turkle is actually, you know, it's more expensive to operate. I didn't know if that was related, so I was trying to connect those two dots. Might be another reason to actually support the measure. So that's what I was looking for.
All right. I think we've had the discussion. Sonia, was there one last thing? Okay. I thought I saw your hand go up one more time. I'll give the honor to move this to our friend, John Brown, the most passionate defender of the Mackenzies she could ever ask for.
I've moved to a dust resolution 2024.
And we have a second. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
I think you said aye, Dick. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. All right, you all can put your hands out. Any opposed, raise your hand and say nay. All right, this looks like it passes unanimously. So thank you to Karen and Carl and Deborah and all other staff who were involved in pulling this together. I'm sure it took a lot of work in a very short period of time. And I want to, I can see that there's some hands. I'll get you in just a moment. Frank, I just want to thank you for your focus on making sure, well, essentially, you're sort of hearing some of the concerns of the board and assuring us that this is going to stay focused on water quality and that we'll take these steps as we should and that we will seek the reimbursements that we can. I appreciate you saying those things and hearing the concerns of the minority, I guess in that case, and trying to address those and work those in as well. We had some hands up, looks like some folks wanted to make some comments. I think Dick was first.
I just wanted to say that, you know, at the end of the day, I decided to vote in support of the motion because I think a million dollars is not an unreasonable amount to have available to deal with some immediate issues that I do understand are urgent. And I do trust staff to be able to figure out how to use that money judiciously. I certainly, I may time out as a board member on this, but I don't want to be talking about $10 million and 3% and 4% surcharges absent some kind of amendment to the source water protection program so that we can have a chance in a more deliberative way to lay out and understand what that might involve. And I'm not even ready, you know, for the remainder of my tenure to be having those kind of conversations beyond the million that we've pledged at this point. I know that will come later and I'll leave it to others to chew on it, but that's kind of where I came down here.
Thank you, Dick. I think Sonia, you had a hand up. No, not any longer. Anybody else?
Thank you, Commissioners. President Metal, I would just echo that the concerns that were raised tonight are concerns that we share. These are not, these are not counter to staff or management's perspective. We do agree that the focus is water quality and the actions need to tie directly back to that. So that is something that we believe, that I believe it's consistent. It's not counter to what was stated tonight. So thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. I'm just looking at the remainder of our items. We have, hold on, I'm just going to do a quick count, assuming we stayed on time and we haven't been anywhere as close this evening. We have about 40 minutes, well, a little longer. Take it back, I didn't see the next page. We have easily an hour's worth of items remaining. It's 7:10 now. We were scheduled to take a break at 7:20. I don't think we're going to get to that point for quite some time. Anyways, I guess what I'm asking for, would people like to take our break now or continue through the next couple of items? Those in favor of taking a break now, raise your hand. Those in favor of holding off until another item or two passes, raise your hand. Looks like we're just going to keep on moving through, at least for a little bit, Mindy. I'll check back in just a little bit. All right, we're going to move on to general business items, and that is item number eight, the 2021 draft budget, long-term financial plans. And it looks like Deborah Hart is going to be in the lead. And if you'd put 15 minutes on our clock, please. Deborah, we can't hear you. I think you're muted. Don't worry, happens to all of us all the time.
I do that so you can't hear my dogs in the background. Sorry about that. Good evening, President Metal and Commissioners. This evening, we are here to review and hear board feedback on draft budgets and updates to the long-term financial plans. We have a pretty short presentation concentrating on changes since the last time so that we can leave time for questions. As you may recall from previous October presentations, we typically don't revisit the capital investment over the tenure plan at this meeting. However, events of 2020 have presented opportunity for management to reimagine some of the future capital investments. So Frank is also going to spend a little time talking about that potential. And then after we review, after the review of the draft budgets and financial plans, staff will be looking for board direction. And I think I skipped ahead without introducing anybody. So I have Adam Ru with me this evening. He's our fiscal services supervisor. And then also available for questions, senior analyst Alicia Voorhees and Ben Satchdava. And with that, next slide, and I'm going to hand it to Adam.
So here's, okay, for an overview of the agenda.
Next slide.
Oh, yes. Can you go there? Okay, thanks. And so, thanks, Deborah. I'll walk through a few slides here. We have an overview, real high-level overview of the 2021 budget and then the financial plans for both water and electric utilities. So the high-level overview is tonight and the pie chart here for both the water and electric utilities combined for O and M and capital budgets. We'll bring the more detailed budget that has individual sections of the utilities and more line item detail available next month, but this is just kind of a glimpse at where we're, what we're looking at so far. Overall, the changes are relatively minor. We have, relative to the total scope of the budget, we're increasing the overall budget by roughly $2.1 million over the 33, or $330 million budget. The increases are kind of shown on the table to the right, the changes year over year. There's a big increase, or the most significant increase is electric O and M budget that's contributed by a higher bad debt expense due to economic conditions largely related to COVID-19. We have some higher IT costs as well as transmission distribution costs were up a bit relative to last year and some insurance increases. These increases were offset by reductions in travel and training. As we discussed in July, we reduced those budgets significantly compared to 2020. And we had different business units came in with other cost savings as well. So we were able to hold the line on a lot of the cost increases with those favorable variances. We also had upticks in capital budgets year over year. That was due to some shared services increases for IT fleet and meter installation expenses as well as some distribution for the water side and some differences in generating capital budgets for the electric utility. We issued debt earlier this year for both utilities and did some debt restructuring that ultimately led to modest increases in the debt service payment, but it's relatively minor change year over year. For the electric utility, some of the increases were offset by reductions in purchase power costs. The reasons behind the purchase power costs were partially because we had lower retail demand, so less of a need to purchase power due to the closure of a large customer, Aralco, out near The Rock in West Eugene, as well as just general economic downturn that has reduced load. So with that kind of high-level overview of the budget, we'll turn to the individual utilities updated financial plans. So this is a table we bring a couple of times a year in July and October. And the table and below and the chart above both represent the same information, which is a projection of some key financial metrics, reserves and debt service coverage relative to the targets. The change since we presented in July is related to incorporating the 2021 draft budget and escalating that for the remaining 10 years. So we're still modeling no increase in 2021 for the electric utility and overall rates. That's the fifth consecutive year in six out of seven years with no overall rate increase. As you can see, all the targets are met, or all of our, yeah, targets are above throughout the plan. In 2023 and 2024, we're approaching the debt service coverage target. We are able to use rate stabilization funds to support debt service coverage, so we can optimize that in those years to have the lowest rate increase as possible while still meeting targets. As you can see, towards the end of the plan in 2030, we're stressed in both cash and debt service coverage. So those are things that we'll be looking at as we get more information on those years. A couple of assumptions that's worth pointing out in this chart is the Bonneville rate increase for, would go into effect in October 2021. We typically have held any customer, or any rate increase to E-Web customers to the next normal rate increase, which will be in 2022. We're still assuming the standard assumption of a 6% Bonneville rate increase, which corresponds to a 2.5% for the E-Web customers. We should have more information about that rate increase in next summer, so we'll have, we'll be able to refine that. But for now, we have the kind of standard 6% every other year assumption that exists in the other even years in the plan. We are assuming, or we're incorporated a full year outage at the Lieber generating facility as the canal work is still being assumed to occur throughout the year, but there's normal production with the other generating plants. Sometimes we highlight the market prices since we do offset some of our retail costs with wholesale markets. The current wholesale market price for 2021 on average is $29 per megawatt hour, and that escalates to 37 in 2030 throughout the plan. So that's pretty consistent with the assumptions we had in July. With that, I'll go to the water utility. So as you can see, the water utility is also above metric throughout the plan with healthy reserve levels and headroom for additional debt and borrowing. Some of the debt we've assumed in the plan is $87 million throughout the 10 years, largely to fund the second source filtration plant, which is currently included at a level of $55 million. And then we also have additional debt for some other capital work. You can see in the bar charts and the table below that we peak in our cash levels in 2025 when we have currently assumed to start making investments in the second source plant that draws down over the next couple of years as it's anticipated to be in service in this version of the plan, at least in 2027. Another point worth noting is we don't have any additional water shed restoration investments included, the extent that, the extent of those investments, as well as the nature of them, to what extent they're capital versus O and M, and then some of the funding of those, whether it's reimbursed or incorporated as a surcharge or in general rates, we'll still incorporate those as we have more information, but for now, those investments are not incorporated. So as Deborah mentioned, in July and in the background, we did show financial plans with higher capital expenditure and there seems to, there appears to be headroom for both utilities to make additional strategic investments. So I'll turn it over to Frank to talk about some of those strategic investments and trade-offs that may be in future plans.
Commissioners, financial people do let me participate in their presentations occasionally. Just as a side note, I have to beg to get into these presentations, but they did let me to do so. Thank you, Deborah and Adam. Over the past few years, E-Web's done a good job of managing our customers' money and assets and therefore rates. But we also, as we've evaluated things, we see opportunities to recraft some of our planning assumptions and incorporating turning up the dial on some of the future capital investments. investments. This tonight is not a commitment. It's not impacting the 2021 budget, but the purpose is to plant a seed and get some of your feedback about the appetite to do so. As noted, both utilities have opportunities to increase the level of investment over the next decade while still maintaining a rate trajectory that remains at or below inflation. And I think that's, that's an important piece of context, that even with turning up the dial, if you look at the compounded rate increase over the decade, it's, it's going to be below inflation. In general, the electric utility has some, some aging issues. There's some uncertainty issues to plan for, along with resiliency. The water utility has some large resiliency decisions to plan for, and with high-level support, we think our engineering and planning teams can formulate a lot more specific plans, highlighting the incremental benefits and the returns on those investments. And that's, that's something that we plan to do. But we would be interested in, in the board's general appetite for increasing the capital investments over the next decade, and what that might look like, and what advice you might have. And with that, for you to ponder, I'll turn the presentation and the microphone back over to Deborah. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Can I get the next slide, please? So, so from here, after the public hearing and board feedback, the budget team will incorporate that, and then return on November 3rd with a draft budget and price proposals. Although the overall revenue requirement has not increased for either utility, the cost of service may indicate that adjustments between classes are needed, and the results of the cost of service will be available in November. Then, following feedback from the November 3rd meeting, staff will return in December with a proposed budget and price proposals, and at that time, we'll be seeking board approval. So with that, I'd like to open it up to hear feedback both on the 2021 budget and future capital spending.
All right, well, thank you, Deborah. I'll open up the queue. Hold on just a moment here. Let me bring everybody back into a view so I can see you all. Okay, if you'd just raise your hand, I can see everybody. So if you'd raise your hand, if you'd like to get in the queue, I will call on you. Go ahead, Sonia.
Hey, I, I see in there that there's some more work around supporting the fiber, just given our needs in the community to use our infrastructure there. I'm certainly supportive of that. Overall, I think the budget works, how it's been presented. I would also just note that I'm also supportive of looking more aggressively again at the secondary water treatment. You know, I know that we've been trying to work with Springfield on that and would like that effort to continue. However, I also see the need, you know, to move that along quicker, and if we're not seeing, you know, forward progression there, I don't want it to delay our work. So to the extent possible, I'd like them to know that, you know, time's a ticking, and at some point, we're going to turn that clock off and just go on our own, because it is a need in the community. And I, you know, we felt like due diligence, we needed to see if we could partner in the community to save the ratepayers' money, but at some point, if they're not willing to play, then we're going to go. That's my, my two cents. Thank you.
Folks, I'm going to interrupt this a little bit. I just got a text from Ann. She reminded me I'm taking things a little bit out of sequence. Thank you, Ann. So our next step, actually, after the presentation from Deborah and her team, was to open up a public hearing, and I know that we have at least one person who's waiting to speak. Once we've completed that, then we'll return to discussion from Commissioners. So let me open up that public hearing, and Ann, if you'll let us know who may be in the queue and invite, I think it's Joe Moll to speak.
That's correct, President Maital. Joe is on the line and ready to go.
Go ahead, Joe.
Thanks. Can you hear me again?
Yeah, I do.
Again, Joe Moll, Executive Director of McKenzie River Trust, 120 Shelton-McMurphy Boulevard. Chair Maital and Commissioners, thank you once again for accepting a few minutes of comment, this one geared to a longer look at EWEB's programs, revenues, and expenses. While I'm speaking on behalf of the McKenzie River Trust tonight, it's also important to know that I also represent the West Central Region as a Commissioner for the Organ Water Resources Department. I'm not speaking on behalf of or otherwise representing any position of WRD this evening, but I can say that my service on that commission and the exposure it has given me to the complexity of water issues across the state has influenced my thinking on source water protection greatly. I want to begin by reiterating that those programs, revenues, and expenses that you're considering are only one measure of how critical an asset, Eugene Water and Electric Board is to this region, well beyond your ratepayers, and not just in terms of water quality, but to water security. EWEB has been, has long been a model for integrating natural infrastructure and gray infrastructure, and I encourage you to continue to demonstrate that mix of entrepreneurial spirit and clear-eyed cost-benefit analysis. The staff and the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee in Congress are hungry for examples of this. The investment you approved earlier this evening and are considering going forward within 2021 and beyond are all demonstrated commitments that will help attract significant federal investment in the years ahead. I mentioned earlier this evening that individuals in the larger community will have some difficult conversations and decisions ahead. Wayne County Commissioners just this afternoon were wrestling with the difficulty of advising residents on how to rebuild post-fire in floodplain and floodway, just as they are considering amendments to code that better buffer the risks of floodplain development to the river. By numbers, EWEB's customer base is primarily downstream, but your constituency, including the river itself, is upstream on the McKenzie River, across the Upper Willamette Basin, and by extension, all the way downstream to Portland. Even noted a 3% to 5% rate increase maybe for three to five years as a McKenzie watershed recovery surcharge. I understand why this language of surcharge is probably being used. You're wise to be sensitive to ratepayer concerns about the rising cost of living. At the same time, I think you've collected consistent data over the years that ratepayers are supportive of additional money going to watershed health, whether it's characterized as a surcharge, or better yet, in my mind, as a wise investment in community assets by community members. So while traditional infrastructure replacements or redesigns or upgrades may be a three-to-five-year time horizon, it may be more important, and in fact, more encouraging to ratepayers and the regional public to hear that you are planning for and investing in the health of the McKenzie River for decades to come. Finally, while all eyes are on the McKenzie River, I'm really encouraged to see in your memo your recognition of the wisdom of continued due diligence and planning for a secondary drinking water source. Yes, in the decades ahead, let's invest in the Coast Fork and Middle Fork watersheds, and let's use the Willamette Confluence area immediately upstream of EWEB property in Glenwood as an anchor for source water protection and trust-building efforts upstream. As has been noted in your memo and in comments by staff, Commissioners, and member of the public this evening, we're still uncovering the impacts, including the financial costs of Holiday Farms Fire. We're also thinking ahead to the high-water season with fingers crossed that we don't have a Pineapple Express and a flashy rain and snow season. EWEB continues to model preparedness and responsiveness. That is reassuring to me as a citizen in a part of the city often hammered by falling limbs and whole trees, and as a vested member of an EWEB-driven partnership that has vision, grounded skills, and a commitment to public trust. Commissioner Hegelson raised a question earlier, is EWEB the right one to lead these efforts? My answer to that is twofold. Yes, whatever you are, and second, no one is looking for you to do this alone. You have a great many friends in this community, and we're here to work with you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Joe. And is anybody else in the queue?
No, that was all for tonight.
All right, well, thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and return to discussion with Commissioners. So we had one, we have, and if you wouldn't mind putting some 15 minutes on the clock, Sonia had a chance to weigh in. Does anybody else want to weigh in on the long-term financial plan as presented by Deborah and Adam? Go ahead, Dick.
Thanks for the presentation and for bringing us the beginnings of a budget that's consistent with all of the things that we've discussed up to this point. First of all, without needing a response tonight, I'm a little bit surprised that we've been able to go six or seven years without any rate increases. I know we set about to do that, and it was intentional, and there have been a lot of really good efforts made by the utility on the financial and cost management front in order to make that possible. I also know that as time has gone up, that our, on, you know, some of our internal operating costs continue to increase. I'm not sure how we can spend savings on purchased power budget if that's coming from a reduction in sales revenue, because I think there's some lost margin there. But I guess my, the point that I would try to make about that is that I'm kind of losing track of, I don't know, how we've been able to manage our way forward and seemingly project for another period of time, a forecast that's consistent with our earlier projections, while at the same time contemplating up to $100 million in additional capital investment. I don't oppose that thought, and one of our worries all along has been that we would underfund capital in order, in the short term, to, to meet our rate commitment. But I just, perhaps somewhere along the line, could be reminded of how, how those pieces all fit together in order to produce such a positive picture without any comeuppance down the road with respect to, you know, future cost escalation. So it looks like magic to me, but I'm glad that, you know, you're seeing that it's possible for us to contemplate yet even higher capital investment than our earlier plans projected. I wouldn't oppose considering that, but I, I guess I would expect that to be vetted through the natural cycle of capital review and all the things that you do there. I think as far as the rate proposal itself is concerned, I have a sense that we're not, we're going to be looking at rates in November. I understood possibly that we were going to defer our consideration of Upper River adjustments, kind of for obvious reasons with respect to timing relative to public input. Is that still the case, that that's not now going to be part of what we would consider this year?
Commissioner Hegelson, the, the plan will be to talk about rates specifically in November and December, the, this being the revenue requirement piece of it, or the initial piece of it. The, the thought is that having and changing the rate, the actual rate paid by Upriver customers, while I still have some, some reasons to think that's a good move in the long term, I don't think that the timing is such that we could have a robust enough discussion with those citizens to, to feel good about changing their rate. There's some other reasons to create a customer class, which is different, keeping the rate actually the same. There's some benefits to that as well, but that, the, the thought is that we would discuss that in detail when we talk about rates in November.
So we're still undecided as to whether that's a proposal that would move forward?
Well, I'm, I'm going to propose that we keep the rate that the McKenzie Valley customers pay, the same rate that the urban customers pay. That's what I'm, I'm going to propose, but I may also, as a caveat, propose a different customer class, just the rate will be identical, if that makes sense to you.
All right. I didn't have a point to make about it. I just wanted clarity as to where we were at with that particular initiative in light of circumstances last month. So I think I understand your response. Thank you, Frank.
Other comments, concerns? Go ahead, Mindy.
Just really quick, thank you for the presentation. I appreciated it. And I want to just, I agree with Sonia about the second source, that I think it is really important for us to start thinking a little bit more aggressively about it, especially in light of the catastrophe that just happened with the fires of the McKenzie. So I support that. And then one very small comment on what Joe Moll said in his presentation, it's a tiny thing, but, or what he said in his testimony, talking about a surcharge in McKenzie, I can't find it right now, but a, but a surcharge for the restoration projects. I do think that it's really important to be careful how we word things, because you can call it a surcharge, but I do think that we should, we should call it something else that kind of underscores the impact of what we're doing. So that's very small and just semantics, but I do think it's important.
Yeah, if you don't mind, a quick comment on that. I appreciate that, Commissioner. We, we agree that what we end up calling it from a bill presentation perspective might be a little bit different. There's a couple of reasons that we picked surcharge over just embedding it in rates. So Joe was talking about embedding something into rates. First of all, we see long-term watershed preservation differently than we do a watershed recovery effort. So a recovery effort to us would be more of a short term, where you could add this surcharge when you're recovering, and then you could back out of it later when you've recovered. We don't want to embed that in rates, partially because rating agencies, while they, they understand sometimes you have things that you can increase or decrease, rating agencies will downgrade us if we actually reduce rates. So, but if we have something for a specific purpose that comes in and then goes away, and it's for a specific purpose, then there is no impact from the rating agency perspective. So absolutely agree with you. The wording's important for a number of reasons. So thank you.
Well, I'll jump in then. Generally speaking, I'm, you know, fine with the direction we're taking and queuing up for both November and December. As to, you know, thinking about an additional $50 million and $100 million on water and electric sides for, you know, adding them to our 10-year capital plans, yeah, I guess I feel like, I feel like a little bit that's coming out of the blue. I'm not really ready to say, yeah, sure, that sounds like a good idea, do it. That doesn't, that seems a little quick. I would want to see some more, significantly more detail why, and, and to an extent along the lines that Dick already alluded that, you know, why, why now? I mean, I get that on the water side, we, I, I know that we have been contemplating second source, and that has, that comes with a lot of investment, but why is it that we have been made to feel like our capital investment is on the, on the electric side? Now I'm speaking in on the water side, it actually has been about adequate, and we had asked for some metrics, and by comparison with our, some of our peers across the country is, are we investing properly? Are we over-investing? Are we under-investing? And we've been told just by looking at various metrics that, you know, the age of our system and other kinds of things that we would use to get a gauge on that suggest that we're investing about right. So my, you know, my question is, why do we, why do we suddenly think that $100 million extra is necessary, and what are we going to get for that on the electric side? I'm talking, and I ask the same question on the water side. I do agree that, you know, the, the sole source, this, I don't think this, by the way, gets to the $50 million extra capital investment on the water side, because I think we've already kind of baked in the money to our 10-year plan to accommodate a second source. So I don't think second source requires an additional $50 million, but perhaps a second treatment facility, but perhaps I'm misunderstood about that. But nonetheless, you can answer that question in a moment, Frank. I do agree that this most recent incident is a, just a reminder of our vulnerability, and, you know, we've had a handful of near misses at different scales. This is probably the biggest of them, but it, you know, reminds us of our vulnerability and the value of, of diversifying. And so I would be supportive of moving forward that much more aggressively with, with treatment facility on, on our, on our other river that we have water rights on for that reason. I'll stop there for a minute. Have some other thoughts, but I, I'll stop there for a moment. Frank, go ahead. It seems like you want, want to respond?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. So I'll start on the water side, since that's relatively easy, and I think probably more consistent with what the board has, has discussed in the past. So the, we do have $50 million roughly in the mid 2020s for an alternative drinking water plant. The, the question- water plant. The, the question will become as we get into this more and more that to what, to what level of, of design and water quality and operational characteristics do we design into that plant? A $50 million plant might be a standby plant, whereas a, a full backup source would be 100 million. So there's, there's different, and those are just sort of rough outside brackets. But as we get into the conversation, the degree of investment needed, whether we have partnerships or not, that's where there will be variance between what was put in there as a placeholder, which is 50 million, and what we eventually get to as a, as the scope and the design of the, of the, the plant. So started at 50, that's what we, you're correct, we do have that in there now. But as we get into the scoping of, of a new facility, that, that could vary. So that, that'll be part of that discussion. On the electric side, you know, absolutely, there's some things that, that we're learning as we go. I think that it's been appropriate, what we've been doing. We haven't pushed the, I think that the term that we talked about last June was the, I don't know, the lump in the anaconda, or I don't remember all the different analogies we used, the lump in the snake, that we weren't pushing something down the road. But we've also run into a number of uncertainties recently. And I'll just cite the canal work as an example. I don't know exactly how many millions of dollars we're going to have to invest either in, in just water management or actual generation. That's, that's something that we need to start preparing for. But I think you're, you're absolutely right. When we come back to the board, we want to have the board understand if we turn this dial up, here's the benefits that we're going to get. We do have an aging system. It's been aging for a long time. A lot of the infrastructure on the electric side was put in in the 60s and 70s. Those are now 40 and 50 years old, reaching end of life. So what was appropriate 10 years ago, we're, we're learning a little bit more. But I think your, your request is, is valid, that we do need to come back to the board with, okay, if we're going to do a, use a different baseline for planning, here's the assumptions that we're going to make and here's the benefits that the board should expect from us when we do that. So that's, that's a fair ask.
Deborah, I want to make sure that you're getting out of this what you need in order to come back in November and again in December, so that we can ultimately pass a budget.
Thank you. Yes, I think we're getting out of it what the budget team needs. As Frank had mentioned, the capital plan would come back next year. So I think we're good.
All righty. Well, I, I believe that, that there are no more questions, but if I'm wrong, somebody can jump in. All right. Well, in that case, we will move on. Thanks to Adam and Deborah both. All right. Let me see here. Well, now we have scheduled a break. We will take it. It's 7:45 according to my clock. We've only allocated five minutes. That seems like it ought to do. So I will see you all at 7:50. All right, folks, if you'd put your cameras back on, I guess that's how I'll know when our, all the commissioners have returned. I see John Brown and I see Dick Helgeson. I don't yet see Sonia or Mindy. I see Mindy. And it looks like Sonia's joining. All right. Looks like the gang's all here. We have just a few minutes, a few items remaining. Item number 12 is base level storage tank upgrades. Frank, I believe you're taking the lead on that one.
Yes, President Mattel, commissioners, once again, good evening. Joining me for this presentation, once again, Karen Kelly, our Water Operations Manager, and Laura Farthing, who's our Senior Project Engineer and Project Manager for the, for the project. I'd like to, you know, really this item, as requested by the board last month, staff prepared an update on the base level storage project status, which we included in your board packet this evening. The purpose of today's agenda item is for the board to ask any questions or make comments as to the direction the project is heading. And with that, President Mattel, we are here basically to listen and respond to the board as necessary. So I'll just leave it at that. And I don't know if there was another slide. I guess we could advance the slide just for discussion purposes. This is kind of where we are that also between last meeting and this meeting, the board met staff at this particular site and, which was on East 40th, just off of East 40th. And so we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I might actually ask Karen Kelly and Laura Farthing to turn on their videos so they can join the conversation as needed.
All right. Well, it looks like we're all here. Sonia, I just want to make sure that you're part of this discussion. I don't see you, so I'm just making sure you're, you're here.
Yeah, I'm here. I just turned my video off for a minute.
And that's fine. You can do that. Sorry. Sometimes it's a little hard to know what's, what's going on with the format. It looks like we're all here. I'll proceed. And feel free to turn your camera off if that works better for you. Well, I'll, we'll open up a queue in a moment, in a moment. I just want to, on behalf of the board, just really thank Laura in particular for running a great field trip for us. I think, I think we all valued it and got a lot out of seeing what it looks like on the ground and being, having our memories refreshed as to why, how it fits within the, the network of storage facilities that we have and why the sequencing is important and how long E-Web has owned that property and the outreach work that's been done to the neighbors already and the urgency with which E-Web feels that we need to proceed in order to stay on task and get the College Hill reservoir done by the state's mandated time. So I know that all of that stuff is out there and that's some of the information that I was reacquainted with. And again, just want to appreciate you. I have some other thoughts to share about that, but I'll open it up to a queue. I just remind folks before I do that, the reason why we wanted to have this item on the agenda is a month ago, or I guess it was last month, there was some public testimony from a former board member, but not in that position. She happens to be one of the neighbors most directly affected by this site as to, you know, some modifications that we might consider making to accommodate nearby neighbors. That's a reasonable thing. We get that kind of request all the time. But because we agreed to go out there and take a look, I think it caused staff some, alarm is probably not the right word, but they, but some potential confusion as to where the board stands in terms of its long-term support for this project. So this is an opportunity for us to get clear with the community in general, because it'll be recorded in the minutes, but also for staff's sake as to where we see the, the priority and the need for this project. So I'd ask folks to make sure that their comments are clear about, about that so that staff can walk away with the direction that they need or, or return to us if they need more of it. But that's the purpose of this. I'll open up a queue. Go ahead, Dick.
So with that guidance, Steve, I, I want to state my full support for the project. I've never had any major concerns about the approach that staff's taken, just sensitivity to the neighborhood and the trade-offs that obviously come up in the context of a project like this. So I'm, I'm confident that you as staff are appropriately sensitive to what those trade-offs are and doing the work necessary to make plans for the design in a way that balances all of those interests. And I realize also that that's not an easy thing to do and that at the end of the day, it's possible that not everybody is completely happy with what we're able to do. But I, I came away from our field trip, both reacquainted with the site and our plans, and also kind of reemphasizing my appreciation for staff's sensitivity to all of the issues that go into a project like this. And I really, on my part, you know, to the extent that I was part of asking for this opportunity, was just kind of looking to have an opportunity to go out there, reacquaint myself with the site and also just have an update, a high-level update on, on kind of where we are with the project. And so from, from my standpoint, those purposes have been accomplished and I would just encourage you to continue on with your work. So thank you for helping us see all of that. And I'll pass it on to...
All right. Well, I'll jump in the queue and basically to reiterate Dick's perspective. I also feel full steam ahead. I was fully satisfied with staff's, you know, responses to questions that were asked out there at the field trip and in, especially in regard to the ways in which that we are accommodating neighbors and the length of time for which we have had this on the books as a plan. And the ways in which I think after the, whatever it is, two, three-year construction period, we would probably be seen as a good neighbor and helping to maintain what is, you know, a quiet residential area. So I feel good all the way around about the plans on file and in full support of what staff wants to do. If anybody has an, an alternative perspective, I think that would be a useful thing to share.
All right. Well, hearing none, I am going to assume that, maybe Sonia wants to say something?
I, I just wanted to say thank you again for the opportunity. I fully support the project. And I do really appreciate, I did really appreciate seeing how far away much of the residents are from the project. It seems like there is a particular group, obviously, that, that will be impacted more than others, but the site on the whole seems like it is well away from a number of the neighbors on the whole. It's, it's not kind of a, around the, the whole project, it's really that one corridor there that will be mostly impacted. And I really, that, for me, that was one of my biggest takeaways. So I just wanted to put that kind of out there on the record that I think staff did a great job in trying in, in placement of the project to try to mitigate the, you know, the impact those neighbors. That's it. Thank you.
Mindy, go ahead.
I don't have anything different in terms of the, my opinion, but I do want to say that this, the field trip was really an excellent way to synthesize the information that you've been presenting to us for quite some time. And so just a recommendation, not to have field trips all the time, but when things like this come up in the future, I think it is really helpful, at least for me personally, to be able to grasp some of the stuff that you're talking about. And actually will save time in the deliberation when we, when we have more of a, a sense of like the physical space. So I'm a fan of field trips in the future, within reason.
Me too. Here, here. Go ahead, John.
I'm 100% supportive of it. I trust staff that they're going to do everything that is necessary to, to take the extra step to address the neighbors' concerns, but it's, it's something that's necessary in the community and it's part of a public infrastructure. So I support it 100%. Thanks.
Well, that seems about as resounding of support as you could ask for, I think, Laura. But if there's anything missing, please let us know. If you'd like to say anything, go ahead. You don't have to. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. You don't have to. If there are things that were missing that you felt like needed to be addressed, I want you to feel that you have the space to do it. I know that Frank also wants to say something. So yeah, I just wanted you to have the space to say something if you so choose.
I just wanted to quick say thanks to all the commissioners for coming out to the field trip. It was a good opportunity to show you what we've been talking about. And thank you for the support.
Great. Frank, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to make note that the commissioners really just wanted to get outside for a little while. That, that was probably the biggest benefit for you all. But I also, you know, I wanted to thank Laura as the project manager, Wally McCullough, and also Jen Connors, who's been doing a lot of the public outreach, which is a, a big challenge for these projects. I wanted to at least acknowledge those three and then the lots of support that they get behind the scenes and, and support of them as well. So thanks for getting out of the house for a little while and, and seeing a beautiful part of Eugene. We'll do it again at Commissioner Schlossberg's suggestion. So...
All righty. We will, I think we can close this item out. We'll move on to number 13. That's correspondence and board agendas. Frank, the floor is yours.
Yeah, President Mattel, before we move on, I thought I saw Commissioner Helgeson raise his hand.
Did I miss something? Dick, I'm sorry about that if I missed you. You're, I think you are muted.
I was going to pass, but since you gave me the opportunity, I think the critical thing to pay attention to going forward is the, you know, impacts during construction. I just remember when all the roadwork was done up here on Crest and Story and that actually went on for about six months and it seemed interminable. So I'm hoping that there, without raising the cost of the project, there are some creative things that we can do to offer those folks some relief from what will be, you know, kind of probably a two-year sort of industrial-scale construction project on their back porch. And that's, I know what a challenge that's going to be, but I'm hoping there are some creative things that can be done to make that more bearable, even as I wholeheartedly support the project.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, well, now we'll move into item 13. Go ahead, Frank.
Yeah, thank you, President Metcalfe. There was one correspondence item that was an update on the advanced metering project or program, really, several projects embedded in that. I don't know if you had any questions on that. If there were no questions on that, we can move on to Agenda Planning coming up.
Well, I know, I believe Commissioner Schlossberg asked a question about that. I didn't have actually the time to read the response. I'll do that afterwards or tomorrow, but if there are any other questions about that.
Yep, we followed up on her question, which was a good one.
Fair enough.
Well, yeah, moving on just to the agendas, we do have November, gosh, we're November and December, which are heavy into budgets and rates. We also have the publication of the electrification study, the first publication. That'll be coming up in November as well. So we are going to suggest that we pull off the Upriver Board Meeting from the calendar and just take a look at that almost on a month-by-month if we see that there's an opportunity to do that or technology has changed. And so we're planning that both of these will be virtual. Doesn't look like we're going to return to face-to-face this year, but I think it's all published there for the board to see. If you have any comments or questions, be happy to answer them, otherwise we can move on to closing items.
I have a quick question. I don't have the date for the November meeting, you know, at my disposal right now. Have we accommodated the national election? I can't remember what we decided on that.
We still have it scheduled for that evening, which is fortunate that we live in a vote-by-mail state. We hadn't received direction to change that to a different night other than it's presently scheduled for election night.
And before we take any further questions, Mon, is there any, let's just say that we wanted to move it to the second Tuesday to accommodate the election. Is it too late to do that or does that create problems for you and/or staff?
The only caveat that I know of, and I'll call on Deborah Hart, there are certain notifications that we have to publish ahead of time for any kind of rate discussion. And so I don't know, Deborah, is there any kind of notification issue with if we wanted to change it, you know, a day or two either side that you're aware of?
We do have a timeline requirement, a notice requirement, and we could meet that with a little bit of movement. It gets trickier if the November meeting moves way out into November and then we need to notice for the December meeting.
All right, so there's a little room, but not a lot.
Yeah.
Well, I know I have interest in potentially moving it. We'll take a quick queue if we can keep the focus on this item before we move to other items, that'd be great. Go ahead, Mindy.
We've actually talked about this before. Sonya proposed this months ago.
I agree, and then I lost track of, I just suddenly realized, oh my gosh, I've lost track of what happened with this one.
Yeah, and I think we were told that it would be too difficult, but I am totally supportive of changing it to not be on election night.
Well, Sonya, if it was your proposal, for one, I apologize if I dropped the ball. That's essentially on me. That's my job to move that forward, but since you proposed it once, where are you at with it now?
I mean, I'm still supportive of it, moving it. I think it's really important to acknowledge the time. I also think that there's potentially risk that I'd like to mitigate not having people in places that they don't want to be because our meeting is held at that particular time.
I feel about roughly the same, by the way. I just feel like this is a different kind of an election year than your average, you know, presidential election. Go ahead, Dick.
I'd be willing to move it. I guess I'd be, I wouldn't feel the need necessarily to push it out a whole week. I mean, maybe even later in the week. I too, like everybody else, probably need some recovery time. I also want to point out, without taking away the seriousness of these things, that our timelines for rate action are self-imposed and there's probably a way that we can make exceptions to them. I'm not necessarily proposing that we solve this particular problem by doing that and maybe just pushing it a day or two later in the week would do the job, but I just, you know, since we do make reference to those rate requirements, those are not federal or state laws or standards or regulations. They hearken back to a time when we set our own standards for how we would conduct our rate actions and they're self-imposed.
John, you want to weigh in?
No, I can, I can count and so I see it's going to be moved. Like I say, we did this before, we said no, and now we're bringing it up again at the bottom of the ninth and two out. I, you know, personally, it doesn't matter to me what day we meet, but there are going to be some logistics in trying to get that done because I know that we have executive sessions planned for that meeting, two of them. And then we have the regular session and then we have the budget issue. And so I just didn't know why we brought it back up again if we've already vetted this once and it was voted not to do it and now we're voting to do it. So I don't know what's changed.
But like you said, you can count. Go ahead, Sonya.
I mean, for me, the political climate is more volatile than ever and I, again, I just worry about the safety of staff who are, you know, potentially on-site supporting our efforts here. I mean, for me, that's one of the biggest issues. I also think that it's very distracting and to actually expect that people are going to come out and even be involved in our budgetary process on that night, it's not very respectful to people. They're not going to pay attention at all.
I'll tell you what I'll be doing during the meeting, if we actually hold it on November 3rd, you'll be seeing me going like this a whole bunch and checking, you know, the New York Times for the latest results. So, and right, it's going to be an incredibly distracting night. I don't know honestly whether it's an unsafe night any more so or any less to have a virtual meeting, but the distractions are intense. I certainly will be distracted.
So President Metcalfe, I think what we can do is propose some options to the board, if that's acceptable to the board. I don't know if this takes an actual vote for us to do that, if you'd rather do that and make it formal, or if you would just like us to go ahead and propose some alternative dates that would be relatively close to that time.
I could just say, I mean, for my part, I'm fine just moving it a couple days, like Thursday or something, you know, just to kind of get clear of the day itself.
Yeah, I think what I'm hearing is, you know, somewhere between a day, two days, and, but not more than a week and perhaps, you know, maybe it's not the best setting right here now to figure out who's available when and for how many hours and all that kind of thing, but there could be a poll taken in a day or two with the expectation that everybody respond promptly so that we can settle this within 48 hours as to when our next meeting is going to be. But it seems like there's enough interest, you know, we can all count that, that it's clear that we don't want it on the 3rd. I could imagine, by the way, that if we were doing, if you felt some urgency around our executive session items, which were only scheduled to take a half an hour and we were going to do that at 5:00, that that's relatively early and perhaps people did have the attention span to handle that as proposed and we would be done with that with, you know, at 5:30 on the West Coast, not too much is going on just yet. That's a possibility as well. I'll leave it in your hands, Frank, to throw out some proposals, but I'll ask everybody to respond, to look at their email and respond immediately so we can settle it.
Yeah, President Metcalfe, that I'm, we're a nimble organization now, so we can make a lot of adjustments. I might even suggest that we do it before election night. I'm not sure what the climate's going to be for a day or two after the election and so, independent of the result, but we'll propose some options to the board and hopefully you all can get back to us quickly on that.
That would be helpful. Yeah, I agree, by the way, the Monday night might just be fine. And I agree that we might all be kind of on pins and needles for several days, if not longer, so that sounds fine. All right, well, does that do it for number 13? Are we in board wrap-up or maybe that's where we already were? I forgot.
We're in board wrap-up, President Metcalfe.
Hey, I just want to throw out one thing and then other folks can take their opportunity as well. I know it's early with regard to, you know, changes in the way, the ways in which we think about our, how we manage risk upriver. But the one thing that became somewhat, you know, clear for me is that there's, there needs to be some policy change and I'm sure that staff is thinking about this already with regard to how, whether we, you know, preemptively turn power off in light of dry season storms, we'll call that, we'll call it that, right? We haven't had to do it in the past because big windstorms generally happen in the winter when everything's really wet and so there's very little, if any, fire risk. Well, if it turns out that we're going to have more storms during the dry season, especially September, the driest month of the year around here, that might be something worth us considering. And then the other thing is additional and more aggressive tree trimming. I, you know, to me, and one of the biggest things that we can do in terms of protecting that watershed long-term, leaving aside the restoration efforts, is more aggressive tree trimming and thinking about those. So I just want to put that out there. I'm sure staff and other commissioners are thinking about those as well, but it very well might be that this is not just a once-in-a-hundred-year, you know, September reverse wind event, but something that could happen more frequently. And so we ought to start thinking about the ways in which we manage ourselves up there differently. So that's a thought that I had. I'll open it up to other folks who might have other board wrap-up items. We can maybe just go right down the list from theirs, starting where, how we normally sit. So Mindy, I guess that makes it your turn.
Yeah, I want to just make a quick comment on something that Frank said before when we were talking about the watershed restoration and he talked about how it was important for E-Web to take a lead in water quality. And it just made me think of my experience thus far volunteering for the Red Cross. And Red Cross is an amazing organization and they have a lot of experts and they've brought in a lot of people from all over the country who've done disaster training. But something that has become very apparent to me is that they don't know the local landscape when they're, when they're looking at addressing either rapid response or recovery. And so I don't want to diss the Red Cross at all, but there just seems to be a lot of redundancy and inefficiency and not harnessing some of the local knowledge that's there. And so I know what we're doing upriver is of a much different scale, but I just do think the importance of us having local knowledge and a presence here is really important. It's just as important as us working with partners like FEMA or EPA or whoever we're going to work with, but just to make sure that we're aware of kind of the power that we harness here and our importance. And that is all.
Thank you, Commissioner Schlossberg. All right, Sonya, did I get that right? Wait a minute, no, Dick Helgeson, I cannot keep track of how, the order in which we sit.
Let me quick and just say that there were a couple of references, once again, tonight to eloquence on my part and I have to say that I take that in part as a compliment, but also kind of wonder about it because it sort of sounds like you're saying, well, we didn't agree with anything you said, but we sure liked the way you said it.
Well, I like that too. That's not at all what I meant, by the way. I almost always agree with what you say. There's a couple of exceptions here.
Good meeting tonight. Thanks, everybody.
Sonya?
Great, yeah, good meeting. Thank you for all the, all the discussion. I really do appreciate the candor that we have and, you know, the ability to disagree and talk through points. I did want to kind of throw out the idea, and maybe it's a crazy idea, maybe you're thinking about it already, I don't know, but I'll ask. Upriver, now that we have to replace all these poles and electrical lines and all that, I mean, we're talking about tree trimming, is this an opportunity to underground? Would it have been helpful in this situation? Would the wires have just melted? I don't know, but it's maybe something to consider since there's a more clear landscape there. I know that it's, you know, obviously a very devastating situation, but maybe there are things that we can do in the future to mitigate that. I mean, if you don't have trees landing on the lines and potentially starting fires, you know, I mean, however, however, you know, things happen, I mean, that's what we saw down in California. We don't know what's happened upriver, but, you know, down, down in California, they saw that. It may be an opportunity now that there's a clear landscape to just look at the potential risk to the region and what, you know, what we could do to fix that moving forward. So that's my two cents.
All righty, I think I already had my say, so I will pass it on to my good friend, John Brown, whose feathers I'm sure I ruffled quite a bit this evening, but hopefully we are still friends here at 18:00 PM. John, do you have anything to say?
Well, President Metcalfe, John had a computer issue.
Oh, didn't even hear that one.
I don't think that, I asked him if he had any comments for me to pass along and he said, nope, I'm done. So...
I didn't know he said it was that center.
So that's it. So I guess that it, by default, moves along to me. You know, I just want to thank the commissioners for the discussion this evening. It's always helpful to us to get different perspectives. Some of the questions that you posed around policy, around undergrounding, around mitigation, those, we are at the very beginning of some of those. I know that we have contemplated a lot of those already and more work still to come. I don't want to elaborate too much, there's just a lot to it. We did see some underground service laterals melt, by the way, so in some cases, that may or may not help, but there is an opportunity when, especially if things can be done like we did with the 16 projects after the ice storm, where we had FEMA reimbursed system upgrades for resiliency that we could do. There's some opportunities for that as well. And so a lot more to come on everything that was mentioned here in wrap-up. And so we appreciate that and I think the comments around the Red Cross and developing relationships and having a local knowledge, that's important. A lot of the relationships that, that our water quality group developed over the last few years with watershed preservation is now bearing results in watershed recovery. So those are not, those are relationships that took a long time to build and we'll have to leverage those and work with those people now. So thanks for all your comments, appreciate it. We got a lot out of it, but more, a lot more to come too. So that's all I had, President Metcalfe.
All right, well, with that, I think I will conclude the meeting. You think it's an iPhone, but actually it's a gavel. Good night, everybody. See you in about a month.
Good night, thank you.